We would like to now call to order the January 25th, 2022 Board Work Session for Lynchburg City's School Board. And at this time, we will move to Section B, which is the Agenda Approval. Members of the Board, you've had the opportunity to review the agenda. They're motion to approve the agenda.
I mean that we approve the agenda.
Right, then moved by Dr. Carter, seconded by Mr. Tross. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member Tross.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Nillis.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Sinha.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Wonderful. All right, it's exciting times in the Commonwealth of Virginia and in Lynchburg, Virginia. And to that end, we're going to stand to do our pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Members of the Board, Superintendent and to the viewing public. We have no policy discussion tonight in Section C, and so we'll move right to Section D, where we have four agenda items tonight. And Members of the Board, as we share each one, feel free to share your thoughts. D1 is a very brief discussion on the realities of continuing our Master Board designation. And you should have a little sheet here with a nice coloring to it. And what we simply need to agree on, Board, as you know, this board, as it is currently configured, will remain together through the end of June. I wish that these nine could stay together forever. But leading up to June, we want to be able to do all that we can to be as effective as we can as we handle very important matters leading up to June. And so with the Master Board designation that we have, we keep it annually by doing one of three things. And as the code requires, we have to do an annual self-evaluation anyway. So they made it relatively easy for us by simply doing what we expected to do, what haven't necessarily done in the last couple of years because of COVID dynamics, et cetera. So what is the pleasure of the Board? That there are three options, and so I can't decide for you. The VSBA Academy and the new member of the team are also options. But the annual self-evaluation is something that will be healthy for us. For example, it's an opportunity to review our norms and protocols and just appreciating, for instance, when and when not to go into buildings and what to do and what not to do and how we're doing with any of those types of dynamics. If we can determine an option, then the Vice Chair and myself will poll the Board around dates. And it might be the pleasure of the Board, if you choose Item Two, that we gather together very, very quickly and go to Charlottesville and knock out that evaluation and come back stronger than ever. What is the pleasure of the Board on this brief matter?
So you're telling me the annual self-evaluation requires us to go to Charlottesville for a day?
Typically, we have, Mike and others can speak to it. That is, that's why it says annually. Typically, you would go to Charlottesville every year.
Why does the evaluation have to be in Charlottesville rather than here?
Because that's typically how it is done. And you do have a virtual option.
Okay. Do they charge money for doing this?
Oh, yes.
How much do they charge?
I don't have that information in front of me.
Is this a revenue generation thing for them, or is this just?
Well, it's required by code, but they provide it for us.
Which code, Virginia code or their code?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They, yeah, I can't imagine the code requires us to go to Charlottesville and spend a day for self-evaluation.
No, but it is board training.
Yeah. And there's, it's like a continuing legal.
So it's not just an evaluation.
Okay.
That's part of it.
So is my understanding then that the code requires us to have a continuing education experience?
That's right.
Professional development.
That's right.
And we go to Charlottesville because that's their headquarters, VSBA's headquarters.
I just think it's more efficient if we were to have them come here. It was one person coming this way versus nine people going that way, but whatever. So you're, so what other options are there?
The other options would be the VSBA Academy, where you have to have each member secure a minimum amount of credit for attending various events. And that would mean every member would have to do that. And I'm not recommending that.
The annual self-evaluation, when we do do that, it's really good for us to, that's one of the times where we can really talk and discuss some of the issues and continue on with the training and also just self-reflections.
And the other option would be the new member of the team. And of course, that would not occur until July. Dr. Gupta.
I just don't want it to turn into a mental health counseling session where you sit there and complain about everything which has happened. A therapy session. And you come back out and you pay it to a therapist, which is VSBA, and then back to the same thing. So what do we get out of it? What's the takeaway? You know, tangible takeaway going forward? Well, you know, you do an evaluation, you do a reflection, and then you attain something after that? Or is it just a therapy session?
Well, it gives the team tools for use to be effective as a high-performing board. That's one of the things that is listed here that annual self-evaluation does for the board. Dr. Brennan?
Dr. Coleman, in light of the fact that, as you pointed out, unfortunately, we are going to lose several members of the board because of aging out as far as their terms expiring. And this is an annual event. I'm kind of hoping that since we did this in the fall, that we would have until the end of this year to complete this. And maybe we should wait until after we go through, we get our new members on the board, do our evaluation of VSBA, which I do think is a very helpful process as far as the board is able to communicate to each other. And for new members in particular, I think it's helpful. But can we, can we consider doing the, our annual VSBA meeting that would cover this after we have new members on the board and after we've said goodbye to the members who have been here for so long and does so much work?
That's one option. We have some incredible work in front of us to do. But that's one option, Dr. Brennan.
And I will say, I do like, as Dr. Carter and Dr. Brennan talked about, I do enjoy when we have an opportunity to just kind of converse about different ideas as a group. I think that's, I do value that highly. So that's another positive for me in terms of annual self-evaluation period. We get to assemble and just talk about issues.
Let's do it this way, because I know we want to continue to move along nicely with our agenda. Is the sentiment of the group that we would do the annual self-evaluation, then we'll get together and talk and poll each other about when it would be?
Yeah.
I agree. I'll jump.
All right. If that's okay, we can move on. All right? Very good. All right. Thank you all for that. We will now move to D2, the Human Resources Report. Dr. Edwards.
Yeah. Normally during a work session, we don't have any action items. And the only action items that we put are those that are timely or most timely, pretty much. And, excuse me, getting staff on board is very timely. You've heard us talk about shortages. So you do have a small Human Resources Report with some positions on it, some nominations and some resignations as well on it for board action.
Okay. Thank you very much. So you see D2 and the action that is required. What is the pleasure of the Board in regards to approving the Human Resource Report as presented?
May I? I just have one request, if I may.
Sure.
Dr. Edwards, I know that, I appreciate this report and I like this spreadsheet layout. Is it possible for me to, I mean, I guess I could have it done my, you know, my own, but I don't have the first six months, to get that same report of nominations, resignations, retirements for all of 2021? And then the year-to-date, I guess this is the year-to-date, is that correct?
This is just right now. These are the new ones we're adding on each month that you get. So you get one every, every month, I think?
Right. And if I could, if I could get a compilation of the entire 2021 year, just so I can see, I really want to see what the net inflow and outflow looks like and in what areas that we're having issues. But this is, this is, covers all of Lynchburg City's school system, correct?
This, yes.
Okay. Is that possible to get that in Excel spreadsheet form?
I'm certain we can make it possible.
Thank you.
Give us some time.
Yeah. No, I don't want it to be a rush. I don't want it to be, it's something I'm interested in.
Madam Clerk, still note that for us, please. Is there a motion?
I made approval of the Human Resources Report.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Moved by Ms. Morrison, seconded by Dr. Carter, that we approve the Human Resources Report as presented. Any further questions or discussion? Dr. Gupta.
So, Dr. Edwards, I'm assuming based on this list now, we are following the DOE guidelines for accreditation of universities. I see one national business of, so it's not more, no more only regional, it's all regional and national.
It depends on the position. If a position requires certification, like a teacher's certification, there are certain rules that go along with that as opposed to if we're adding other staff members, but yeah.
But if that accreditation is, earlier the issue was you have to have a regional accreditation to apply for a job.
Not to apply for a job, because we have some folks who don't even have college experience that still apply for a job. So this position is a division-wide health testing coordinator, which is the cares money. It's not a teaching position. It's not a certified position.
The teaching positions still have their regional.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Any further questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member Tross.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Nillis.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Sinha.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move to D3, which is our High School Program of Studies. And this is for action tonight as it is at least our second reading. Dr. Edwards.
Yes. So this is the second reading, and Deputy Superintendent Pugh has reviewed it, made some changes. So I will turn it over to her to just speak to.
Thank you. You all received some updates in an email that Dr. Edwards sent. I'm just going to quickly go over those. There are amendments, additional changes. On page one, the Empowerment Academy address was updated. On page four, there's some verbiage about the AP exam. Warning that has also been updated. And that, there is a line that is, this, I think, will help clarify what we've been talking about. Let me log on this. In terms of students taking the AP exam. So if, in its page orbit, actually, I think on the document that's linked, it's page six, a student, and the student must sit for the corresponding, corresponding exam unless an exam exemption applies. Exam exemptions do not apply for AP exams. So there were some question. Students must, if you're in one of an AP course, you are expected to sit for the AP exam. If you, for some reason, are unable.
If you, for some reason, are unable to sit for that exam. For instance, the student is sick or there is a family emergency and the student is unable to sit, then that student must take the end-of-course, teacher-created exam. There is no exemption for a senior. So there are some exemptions for seniors in other cases, but in terms of AP courses, there are no exam exemptions. So that wording there was stricken. There was also a question, and this was more related to the policy, but I will go over this as well because it does impact Court Program of Studies. Students, there was a question about whether students could take both the AP exam and the end-of-course exam to try to raise their grade. And the answer to that is no. They take one or the other. So they are expected to sit for the AP exam unless something keeps them from doing that, and then in which case they would take the teacher-created, end-of-course exam. The course load information, again, that has also been updated. That will also be updated in policy as well. And that's updated to reflect the number of courses that the students need to take. It did go from six to seven and from seven to eight. So students in grades nine through 11 are required to take seven credit varying courses in that eighth period, because we now have the AB block, which is eight periods spread over two days. In that eighth period, students who are in good standing, and if there is availability in the course itself, they may opt to take an elective course. Those who do not choose to take an elective course in that eighth period will be enrolled in the enrichment period, which they have been this year, either at Heritage High School or EC Glass. So that's the change to the wording there. And then the others, I think I added, addressed in the email to you. So the tables were removed on page 12 to 14 because they were no longer relevant. The mass sequence chart was confusing to some, so it's now been put in the wording below. I will explain the withdrawal from a course that is a, the fifth school day, not the fifth, you know, not, not the 10th day. So before an AB schedule, the fifth day of the course would be two weeks. So if we kept it at 10th day of the course, that would be four weeks in a course, and it would be nearly impossible for a student to make up four weeks of missed material in the course that they're enrolled in. Additionally, we also uploaded for you to review a draft of the AP African-American Studies Course that was, that is in the Program of Studies. And I believe Mr. Reed, as well as Dr. Bryant and Maria Jaeger are on the Zoom call to answer any questions you might, still might have.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Pugh. You're doing a fine job. And if any of our distinguished presenters would like to share or board members have any questions concerning this. Ms. Pugh, had you, is there other parts of your presentation that you wanted to give?
Those are the highlights that are.
If the floor is open for questions on this. Again, this is coming to us tonight by action. Maybe if you all could speak to the African-American Studies Course to whatever degree you like. See Aaron Reed on and whomever.
Is Mr. Reed on there?
There he is.
Hi. Apologies, I'm here.
In the interest of time, any specific questions?
Does anyone have specific questions for Mr. Reed about the African-American Studies Course, the AP?
Dr. Brennan?
Mr. Reed, thanks so much for your detailed curriculum for the program. It's very helpful and very detailed, and I appreciate that. Is there a, a list of books? Will this be based on reading from different books as part of the course? If so, can you give us any examples of what books would be used?
So the College Board is never going to dictate for us the books that we have to use. That's not their, that's not what they do. As with all of our other courses, the school, the division, would be making those choices. And I suppose as, as the teacher, I would be sort of the first line to propose that. I don't know that I can provide you with a list of titles right now because I haven't gone to training. That happens in the summer. I think what I can say, though, is that, as you well know, Lynchburg City Schools and EC Glass has a policy, a longstanding policy in terms of how we adopt new works. And that policy includes having parents, having community members, either read or become as familiar as they can with the book so that we can sign off on those. And so that, that process allows a lot of different people, a lot of input in terms of what we utilize. It's what the English Department has used since I was a student there, honestly. And so I wish I could give you a title, but I haven't been to training. And, and while I can talk a lot to the skills, because that was the part that I was in on last summer, I can't speak to the titles because I wouldn't know that until training, in all honesty.
Thank you. Mr. Tross?
Mr. Reed, thank you. Is this the same program that we were talking about at the last board meeting where you told us that we were one of 30 schools selected in the?
Yes.
Yes. Now, if you recall, I mean, I view this as an experimental class. Is that true or not true?
Define for me experimental.
For instance, you don't know what books you're going to use to teach the class.
Okay. Then if that's the definition, then yeah, that's experimental. Now, are they utilizing college courses and faculty and getting input from that? I think probably so. But again, I don't want to speak for the College Board. I haven't gone to training.
And that's what gives me pause for concern. You're asking me, or the Board is asking me to come in and really approve a curriculum that I know very little of because it really is not well-defined. And by your own admission, we don't know what books we're going to utilize. And you don't, have not gone to training. So I don't think in fairness to me and our school system that you can tell me really, to any level of certainty, what exactly this course is going to involve. And I think it's a, it sounds good from the top side, but I'm just a little bit concerned that we're, you're, we're being asked to approve of something that we really don't know what books are going to be utilized, nor really what it's about because you haven't had a chance, through no fault of your own, to go through the training. Is there anything else that you can tell me that would maybe quell my concerns in that respect?
I think so. So let me go back to the experience that both of your children had when they came through AP Capstone. When we adopted that seven years ago, we did it under. When we adopted that seven years ago, we did it understanding what skills that class was going to teach, but not necessarily knowing the text, because we don't know. No teacher knows until we go to the training. And again, can I be clear? The College Board will never tell us what to use. If you ask me the week after I go to training, I can tell you the texts that I think will best help based on the layout of the course, but that training is where I learn all of that. So, we have the power, the school system and the school, and, and I, as the teacher, we have that power. So, here's the question, I think, that maybe is a better one for you to ask. Do you trust the policy that Lynchburg City has had for decades in the English Department and beyond to vet these books with parents, with community members, and with teachers? Do you trust that that process has been successful in the years past? Because if so, we're gonna use the same process. Nothing about this is new.
I gotta remember my background. I don't trust anything that I don't have and do with my own eyes if I'm asking to approve it. So, um, what, I guess I'm trying to understand then, what are you expecting to get out of this training?
Well, I think the first thing I'm gonna get is a, is a pacing guide, which is maybe the most important thing that a teacher gets. You guys, of course, have the document that shows the skills that's gonna be taught. And I think that you can see that the way that those skills are laid out, there's going to be a little bit of a historical aspect to the course. Again, it's not a history course, right? It's a studies course. And so, what we wanna do is investigate the voices throughout the history of African-American thought and writing in the United States and ask how they contributed to the progress of this country. And that, I think, would be the, the driving force behind how we select texts. Can they help kids think critically, um, about a wide variety of things, both, both historical and contemporary?
And I appreciate it, and I think all of those lines of thought and ideals and values and objectives are critical and very important. I just have a problem, um, being asked to, to approve something that is not... I really don't know exactly what I, what all it is entailed. It, it gets simple. It's, you know, I don't know what books. I don't know what training is being undertaken. But that's, that's fine. I understand. Thank you.
Go right ahead, Dr. Edwards.
We're in a similar boat in that we're looking to participate when we do courses, like, for example, with CVCC, and we wanna offer those courses to our students, um, expanding our program. I suppose even to the degree that the GovSchool or STEM decide that they want to change programs, it's an opportunity that we offer to our students that we don't always know at the time of printing of the Program of Studies, which is really offering the opportunity what the exact book or, or books, plural, if there are books in there for some of those courses, might be. And at the point of doing this even right now, if you were to say, "Tell me the exact books for the Mechatronics course," I, I don't know off the top of my head. And if there's another opportunity or course that's being developed through CVCC or STEM or GovSchool or any of our partnerships, we would be in the same boat at this point saying, "Yes, we wanna afford our kids an opportunity," but also at the mercy of the curriculum development. And to Mr. Reed's point, it is not unusual. I was a former AP chemistry teacher. Summer is it. You really have to wait because you have to follow the AP protocol. And you do have to wait and go to the summer training, and after the summer training, you are much in a better position to better select in alignment with the course, the pacing guide and, and the emphasis as, as well. So, I just didn't wanna isolate this to this one African-American Studies course and just say that there are several courses and opportunities that we offer our students for which we may be in a similar, similar boat.
Well, I mean, I gotta tell you, I don't think, I, I don't care what the course is. If you're approving something that's not fully developed, that's, for me, a pause concern. I don't care if it's chemistry, math. I don't care what it is. We don't know what the full process is, and I think that's, quite frankly, from my standpoint, um, is negligent. For me, to, for someone to be asked to approve something that they don't fully know what they're approving, that's like signing a contract without fully reading the contract. You're gonna be bound to that contract. I would never want to sign a contract without understanding exactly what I was getting into. And you're asking me to look at something proven. I don't, and quite frankly, if it's chemistry and you're asking the same thing, I would say that we need to know what we're getting involved in. So, I don't care what the subject matter is. I don't think, and if, and if that's the process, then the process is flawed, in my opinion. And I, I'm not an educator, obviously. But from a very, just a straightforward, logical process, if, if, we shouldn't be approving things that we don't know we're approving, especially based on my definition. If we're on one of thirty schools in the country, uh, on this particular subject matter, I really wanna know what I'm getting into. So, it's just unfortunate that it's, it has to be associated with African-American Studies. I don't care what the subject matter is. I don't agree with approving something that isn't fully vetted.
Thank you, Mr. Tross. The chair's gonna recognize Ms. Morrison and then Dr. Senha.
Well, Dr. Edwards said what I was planning on saying, that we've had this process, and I was involved with it as, as a teacher and as administrator when developing the curriculum and, and course for the Holocaust Studies. We did it when we, this, the independent study courses with AP Art and AP Music. We approved the course, and then we worked with the teachers to then come up with the materials. That's always been the process, and it's been one that's been very, very successful for a long time.
I disagree with the process. I wouldn't, I mean, and those...
And, and I appreciate that, but I'm telling you, as an educator and as administrator of a high school, that is how we always did. And we had committees of parents who came in and said, "We wanna talk about this book. Why are you proposing this?" And that's the process that we use to get input. So, I appreciate all the time and energy that you've put into this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Dr. Senha.
So, let me check my understanding. So, we're, we're, um, the decision is whether or not we wanna be one of the thirty schools to offer this course, right? It's in development. It has a set of learning objectives. Those student learning outcomes or objectives are common, but is it fair to also imagine that thirty schools will teach this course and no two will be exactly the same? Because they will choose different books. They will have different sensitivities to content and such because it goes through local control and review. Is that, is that a possibility? Or is that how, is that how it ultimately ends up?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Um, so, here's, here's the answer to that. The, as you said, the learning objectives, of course, are identical. Another course that I teach is, is AP Language and Composition, well-established course. We've had it for years. Do different AP Language and Composition teachers from across the country use different texts to arrive at the learning objectives for their kids? The answer is yes. The answer is yes. And I will, I will share with you, one of the things that I do in the summer is I'm an AP reader for that subject. I'm actually an AP trainer for that subject. And one of the things that the College Board encourages us is to talk about the variety of ways and texts that can help kids and classes get to those learning objectives. So, are we gonna see thirty different schools using a variety of texts to arrive at the same kinds of learning objectives? The answer to that question is yes.
Dr. Gupta, thank you. Uh, Dr. Senha.
No, just sharing my experience from higher education. The learning objectives are there. The content is there. And the textbook, even if you have four sections of Accounting 201, you may find the four professors use four different books. Ideally, they should use the same book, but they'll end up using the one they, they prefer. They have been using. They got the cheat sheets on them for twenty years, and they'll use that. So, uh, you know, those yellow pages you'll see, which are rotten, but are still being used. So, textbook is just captures what is being defined in learning objectives and the content. So, I see the content is listed, and the learning objective is there. So, the course assessment would be based on those learning objectives. Am I correct in assuming?
Yes, sir. That would be exactly correct.
If I could give a, just a practical example in the room. So, I'm looking down, and it, one of the learning, um, core skills says, "Explain how an artist's technique, um, materials, or style achieve a particular effect or elicit a specific response." And we have artwork in here. So, Dr. Coleman could choose this picture and get the class to explain that. I could choose the second picture, which is very different from the first picture. Ms. Morrison could choose the third picture. So, we can still get at, as, as Mr. Reed said, the same learning objectives by selecting a different picture, which, considering that we do have a lot of historical artwork here in Lynchburg, it might be good to use Lynchburg artists to illustrate that same learning concept, which might not work, let's say, in Missouri, someplace else where they may be do, doing this thing. So, to the point that the resources support the content. And again, none of these pictures would be selected unless this board, the committee, parents, and everybody said, "Yeah, those are the ones that we want." So, that's, that's kind of the process, so you have the essence of what's being taught. And, and most educators will tell you, and as a former curriculum director and Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, if anybody tells me the textbook is the curriculum, we know that that's 101. No. The textbook is not the curriculum. The textbook is a resource to support the curriculum. It's the same as a newspaper article may be a resource to support, or a particular piece of music or artwork. They're all part of that to support.
Dr. Brennan?
Like Mr. Tross, I'm not an educator, but I think we fall on different sides on this discussion, which is that I am very impressed by the curriculum which, which has been presented to us in response to our request last time. And I'm also impressed by the fact that, you know, this is a course that is being promoted by the Advanced Placement Program, which is a nationally-recognized organization. We are being selected at one of thirty schools, which I think is a compliment to our schools, and I'm sure to, to Mr. Reed, who represented us. This is an elective course. It's not required, so this is not something that we're telling students they have to do. And as he pointed out last time, I think this is a, an intervention to try to encourage minority students to participate in AP programs, which is something we've struggled with for a long time, and certainly seemed to make a lot of sense. So, heading towards a motion on this, I would like to say that I think we have the opportunity to approve a new, innovative, and challenging AP program that is only available at select schools in the United States. We have the opportunity to allow one of our most talented, most dedicated, and most popular teachers to oversee the course, and with the opportunity to add a course to the high school curriculum, which will provide the opportunity to increase the participation of minority students in AP programs, which has been a goal of LCS for years. So, at the appropriate time, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to support this curriculum.
The chair is willing to entertain a motion, but we certainly do not want to leave anyone out who would like to state their opinion. That is what we do on this board, is we hear each opinion and ultimately act as one. Up there, Dr. Nillis.
So, I'm fairly sympathetic to Mr. Tross's opinion. And would appreciate, uh, um, your thoughts on, say, learning outcome number two here, which is, uh, "Explore the critical intersections of race, gender, and class," yada, yada, yada. That is pretty loaded, potentially. And I'm wondering how, um, we on the school board and you as the lead instructor would address that, particularly in light this is a, a brand-new course with no history.
I think that's a really important and fantastic question. And, and ultimately, I think my goal here is to help students have a clear perspective of a variety of voices on this, this kind of very challenging material in a very challenging time. You know, the question about texts, I think, related to that is really important, and that's why I would wanna make sure that I have as many parental voices and community voices helping me and us to make that kind of decision. Because you're right. What we wanna do is we wanna let kids and students who encounter those ideas make the best possible choices for themselves. And I'll piggyback on what, uh, Dr. Edwards was saying a moment ago, and, and she made a really fantastic English teacher right there, so...
Oh, no!
One compliment, it shuts it...
A learning objective, right? So, one thing that I imagine could, could be the point of this course is to provide students with, in, in that, for that learning objective, for example, maybe three or four choices of voices that are speaking to that, and let them choose a voice that's interesting to them and pursue that. That's, that's kind of the basis for the Capstone course that I teach, which is for the students to have a kind of authentic inquiry into a particular topic, or, in this case, a particular learning objective. So, I think the answer is, we get, we get a variety of, of help from the community and parents' voices, and we also empower the students to find what's interesting to them about it.
Any follow-up, Dr. Nillis?
I, I guess the follow-up is, you know, when, when it specifically states, "Explore the critical intersections," okay? That pretty much defines how you're gonna look at, at a topic or an area. It's gonna be, you know, the binary, oppressor-oppressed. I mean, that's where, that's where the critical studies comes from. It's, you know, I don't wanna go off on a, on a rant, but when you, when I see critical intersections, or intersect, yes, intersections, um, of race, gender, and class, that's, that's the classic Marxist, you know, critical studies. And if you can, I, I think we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna, if we go forward with this, we're gonna have to be able to address that. And, and it's, it's one thing to have, uh, author with a particular point of view, but there should be a counterweight with the alternative point of view, not necessarily with the same, um, assumptions. So, I personally have a real problem with, with number two, the way it's worded. And, and it's not a reflection of you. It's, this is coming from, um, the College Board.
All right. Uh, thank you. Dr. Nillis, uh, Dr. Senha.
Yeah, just a question. I really like that, um, students in these AP courses are empowered to pursue where their interests go. Do you, um, when you take that approach, do you offer some guardrails so that they're not, uh... 'Cause there are some real wackos out there, for example. I wouldn't want Charlie Manson's view of race relations to, to offer a really ridiculous, extreme example, but somebody could go down that path. So, so, um, and I'm sure that's a concern. I mean, I'm being ridiculous, but I think you get the point. There has to be, 'cause we're still educating students. We have to... And now, we have access to every voice, no matter how benign and naive, to crazy, extreme. So, how do we find, uh, a viable middle with those counterweights so that students aren't just getting what they want to hear, but still being exposed to alternative views and, um, that they can weigh and balance against each other? What protections are in place for the, for that issue?
Um, I, I think that's a really important and valid concern as well, and, and I think you're exactly right. The age of the internet is the age of, of, of every voice, right? And so, I think I have two answers to your question. The first is somewhat obviously me. So, as someone who's gonna go to training and as someone who, uh, has a master's and a bachelor's degree in English and who has taught for twenty-four years now, I am the first line of making sure that the kids have a balanced and interesting view on a topic, that they understand that one voice is not necessarily the most important or the end... that they understand that one voice is not necessarily the most important or the end-all, be-all of that. And then the second one is that as we're designing this course, so once I go through that training and I understand how we're attacking some of these learning objectives, what are the voices that I am familiar with and that I have read and that have been suggested to me that can provide that balance? So if we're, if we're talking about writers of the early 20th century, then we want a variety of people who see the growth of America in that timeframe and, and what it means to, to people who are going through all of those kinds of struggles. So, so I think part of that is me and, and, and the text that I choose. And part of that is the way that the college board helps me structure the course so that the kids get exposed to, well, look, we've got a voice over here that is suggesting one thing. And we have, in your words, a counterweight, right, which is another voice saying, well, that might not be, there's, there are some problems with that. And that's, that's critical thinking. So I think that that's, I think you're exactly right to ask that question.
Dr. Gupta?
Mr. Reed, going back to Mr. Tros's question, the number three, if you look at it, objective says analyze perspectives in text-based. So you, basically, they have coordinated you to the text you are using and the perspective that textbook will present. And that may be skewed or biased in one direction. Is that a right assumption to make or is that not a fair assumption to make?
I don't have any expectation that the, the text, and I, I know you're using the word textbook, and I don't think, I don't anticipate this course to have a textbook in the traditional sense. Even my AP Language and Composition class doesn't have a textbook in the traditional sense because what we're doing is we are analyzing, again, voices around a particular idea or a topic. And, and then we're authentically evaluating those. Does it make sense for this person to have leveled this kind of criticism, for example? And I think that this course is, is gonna, I think, is gonna be somewhat similar. So I don't foresee, and it's not anywhere in my design, for there to be a, a right and wrong answer to these kinds of questions. And I think that's, when you say biased, that's what it kind of sounds like to me. It's like there's, there's a sort of right way to think about this problem and a wrong way to think about it. I don't have any sense that that's what the course wants. I think, based on the students that I teach, 16- and 17-year-olds all day long, sometimes they don't even know a problem is a problem until we start to talk about it. And then they go, this is, I didn't even, this is a problem. And being able to talk about solutions to that problem and the viability of solutions to that problem, that's, that's really where these courses are amazing, is allowing kids, again, authentic reaction to the problems and solutions that you and I know are, are very real. So I really don't think, it's not going to be presented as like, it's not math class. It's not, hey, this is, this is the right answer, because you and I know that it's more complicated than that.
All right. Follow-up from Dr. Gupta, and then Dr. Edwards would like to share a comment.
Mr. Reed, are you planning to use the African-American resources we have in town? Like, you know, Owen Cardwell, Virgin Hood, so they bring in a perspective and a history behind the conversation?
I, I think that would, you know, be fantastic. And, and we have, we obviously have a lot of people here in town. We have former educators for Lynchburg City Schools that I think would be a really fantastic voice just in terms of talking about their experiences. So, yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to doing a lot of that, sort of very specific, very local kind of learning. I think that's a great idea.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Dr. Edwards?
I just wanted to follow up on Dr. Gupta's question regarding text-based. And in that sentence, it talks about text-based data and visual. If you go to page two of the document, you'll see written sources, which is the text-based, just referring to both historical documents, literacy texts, and music lyrics as the text-based. And then it talks about what data is, tables, charts, graphs, maps, and then, of course, visual sources as well. So there is kind of a definition referring to what the, the item that you just mentioned to also include musical lyrics and, and other things, not just a textbook.
All right. The chair is going to recognize Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I've sat here and I've listened to my colleagues, this is, this is an engaging discussion. And for me personally, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to really gather my thoughts on how to express, express where my perspective is on this. I think we're afraid of the unknown and the uncertain. I keep replacing words in this. If instead of African-American studies, it said Native American studies, Jewish-American studies, these are politically charged right now. But if I were to put in Irish-American studies or Anglo-American studies, I kind of wonder, would we be having this in-depth discussion and being so scared of the unknown? I think there's a certain part of this that we need to trust, both the college board, our teachers, and our students. I, when I looked over this, the course preview, I looked over the skills matrix, I was impressed with this program. And in all honesty, I think my daughter is going to be excited to take this program next year or the year after. So I, for one, would like for us to trust and to step out into a new frontier, allow this course to move forward, allow this course to be developed further and provide more information for us so that we can have a better understanding of this. But let's not be afraid of being afraid. That's what I think, that's what I think seems to be here. We're afraid because this is a politically charged issue. And I, for one, would like to trust our staff and our students and approve this program.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Uh, Dr. Brennan, and then Dr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, your comments. I would like to make a motion to support the approval of the Advanced Placement African-American Studies course for the 2022-2023 course of studies.
Can I? What we're seeking is the approval of the high school program of studies. Which includes? As it's presented to you, which includes this course, but all of the other courses that are there. So that's what we're seeking.
Sure.
We're not seeking to, you know, pull this out and, and make it on its own. It is part of the high school program of studies, and we are seeking your approval of a high school program of studies as it is presented to you tonight.
Uh, Dr. Brennan, do you support that language?
To make, to make the motion be support of the proposed high school program of studies for 2022-2023, which includes the African-American Studies AP course, which we've discussed.
Yeah, I'm not finished commenting, so I'm not ready for that.
The chair, the chair, there's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I understand.
And then that motion requires second.
I would second it so we can.
Seconded by Mr. Harvey, so now we will go into further questions. Mr. Tros?
Thank you.
No, excuse me, Mr. Tros, please, if you are allowed it. Chair, Dr. Carter did have her hand, then I'll get right to you.
Okay, that's fine.
And I was, I have to agree with Mr. Harvey, and I was going to echo some of the same sentiments. The last time that we had this long discussion was on, if anyone was here, the hip-hop course. And some of these other courses that we've had that are new, there, there's no discussion. They just go right on. But it seems like whenever it's dealing with, I don't know, with interests or things regarding African-American studies or change-up, then we have to go into this long, drawn-out process. When there's always, already a process in place. Just wanted to say that. I just don't understand why those things are the, where we delve so far into like the hip-hop course and now this African-American studies. There are other studies that are also very new and that we don't have all the details for, but we vote on. There's no problem with those.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Mr. Tros?
Let me just state, I am committed to closing the achievement gap. And I see from the data that's been presented to me by the school, who very boldly exposed some issues that our minority and underprivileged students are being left behind on the basics of mathematics, reading, and writing. I will be the first to praise Mr. Reed as one of the most outstanding teachers. My children think the world of him. I think the world based upon what I've seen. I heard comments in terms of, you know, we want to promote minority students towards AP classes. I do too. But the energy and resources expended in this type of program, I truly believe we will get a better return on our investment as a board and as a Lynchburg City School system on dedicating those types of resources and energy and instructors such as Mr. Reed to helping these children that are being left behind. I think it is a wonderful program, and I admire your energy and your tenacity, Mr. Reed, in getting this type of program together. But I would challenge you, I challenge myself, I challenge this entire school board, to focus that energy on the children that we, quite frankly, you remember I said I was shocked, heartbroken? Are we going to continue to put our heads in the sand while we let, stand by promoting? A good program, I'm not saying this is a bad program. I don't agree with ever approving something I don't know what I'm approving with. I do like what's in it. But I would much rather see you put these energies and this into a curriculum to help these children that by our own data are multiple levels below in reading and mathematics. I speak to teachers at the high school level, have students who can't put together proper sentences and they're in high school. I implore each of you on this board to let's not take our eye off the ball of getting these students who are being left behind to the level they need to be at. I think it's great to want to have minority students in AP programs. That's great. The fact of the matter is, and I'll say it, it's probably going to be the white kids coming from the '03 areas that's going to be taking this class. Those are not the students I'm here to help. I'm here to help the children that by the very data that was given to us are being left behind. We're cheating them as a school system. So what does that have to do with this program? Not a lot, other than I recognize you, Mr. Reed, as an outstanding professor, teacher. I would challenge you to focus your energy on some different set of students. And I still have a problem with approving something that I really don't, we, you know, we haven't had the proper training for the instructor, as told me himself. I don't know what books. Dr. Edwards, I understand this is a status quo, Ms. Morrison. I just don't agree with approving things that we don't know we're approving. I just have a fundamental problem with that. So that's what I say.
Thank you, Mr. Tros, and we appreciate that, your opinion. I, I did want to ask, and this is somewhat practical, will students at Heritage High School have an opportunity to enroll in this class if there's appropriate time and space?
Well, Mr. Reed needs to answer that class because over, over time, but right now, Mr. Reed is the pilot instructor. So if this course goes forward, and, and Mr. Reed, you know, correct me if I'm misspeaking, but for this school year, this course will be available to EC glass high school students.
That is, that's, you're correct.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to inquire. All right. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Thank you, Board, for sharing. And so we will now call the roll. If you are in favor of the motion made by Dr. Brennan, you are in favor of us approving the program of studies for the 2022-2023 academic year for high school students in its entirety. If you oppose, you would both know, meaning that you are not in favor of the said motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Tros?
No.
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Ms. Schoolbook Member, Dr. Morrison?
Yes.
Schoolbook Member, Dr. Coleman? Dr. Card, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Schoolbook Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Schoolbook Member, Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
Schoolbook Member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Schoolbook Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Schoolbook Member, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one.
All right. Thank you, Board. I think we can go right into D4, I believe we can. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Harvey, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I would, as to acknowledge my colleagues' comments and concerns, I would like for us to be able to revisit this, maybe in the fall, after we have the opportunity, Mr. Reeves has a chance to go to training. We, we have more of the literature kind of put together and a, and a presentation be made back to the board just as an update. Because again, I think the more information that we have, the more communication that we share with one another, I think it will improve everyone. And, and maybe shining some light on some of these unknown subjects will give us all more comfort and ease with, with lots of different things, but specifically this course.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Madam Clerk, please so note the recommendation. I, I believe we can go right on into D4. I think we can. The 2022-23 budget discussion. Dr. Edwards?
Certainly. So this is a continuation of, thank you, our budget discussion. And we have today, February 1st, February 15th, March 1st, March 15th. And then on, on March 15th, unless the board desires to have another meeting in March, later in March, but before April 1st, we will have the final vote on the budget from this, this school board. And then, of course, you know, the budget process still continues at city council. So I outlined the dates of the work so that we understand the work that has to be done and the time to do it. What we are going to do tonight, so we've, we've kind of organized this as an administrative team. So we're going to do a couple of things tonight. The first thing that we're going to do is review the revenue. And that's the revenue as proposed in Governor Northam's budget, which is the one that's in our CUP tool that we use to prepare this. You all that are veterans know that that may change a little bit, so we're working with what we have right now. We'll share that with you. We're going to go over the lines, local match. We'll also highlight new things that are new in the revenue and some things that have been taken out. So you know how you always get increase and decrease and have questions about that. We'll, we'll hit that. Talk about the compensation supplement, which is the raised increase over two years, over the biennium that was proposed. And then have questions on the revenue part of it, so we stay structured. The next part, we'll do an income statement as of, I think, December 30th, of what are our salaries and benefits broken down by instruction, maintenance, technology? So the board has an idea of what do we spend now on salaries and benefits in Lynchburg City Schools. So we'll go over that. And then we have salary proposals of how we, as the administrative team, have worked together along with some input from the finance committee, some input from this board, from a previous meeting, to work our way to some salary proposals and some salary goals for all of our employees, including substitute positions. So we're going to take you through that tonight. And then at the end of this, we would hope to have some consensus around, does this proposal meet the board's needs? And then, because that's going to be the biggest part of our budget. That takes up about 80% of our budget. That's tonight. There are some next steps, so we have more meetings where we're going to go through. So what's our existing, the same way we're doing, what's our existing salary, payroll, and benefits? What are our existing non-personnel expenses? And then what are the proposals that we've received as we work together with staff? And those proposals can include staff, they can include programs, such as, you know, I mentioned Mechatronics, putting money so that we have students to participate in that. They can include perks and things like that. So toward the end, we're going to just frame it at the end. We'll come back and remind everybody about what we're going to talk about at the next meetings. And that way, we can use our time as productively as possible with a set of goals going forward. So does that process make sense to the board?
Dr. Gupta?
It looks like the mechanics of what we do for the budgeting each year, right? It's the, put the nuts and bolts together and make up a little card. My question was, personally, I like, when I set up my home budget or the business budget, it's sort of a solution provider. You know, some of the, if the... You know, some of the, if the people are having problem with their IT infrastructure, you beef up more money in providing better networks and network management. So I'm hoping as we discuss, we'll look at, right, this thing we have done which stands out and provide solution to an ongoing problem Lynchburg City Schools have been having.
Yes. And some of that, well, that's explaining the why behind, the, the why behind the what. So some of it may just be, for example, an opportunity. It's not necessarily a problem that we have with our current CTE programs. It's an opportunity for advancement. Other things where we're looking at some learning loss and doing some things, that may be a solution in terms of our work in closing the achievement gap. So it's a little bit of both, and yes, we will explain it as we get to those sections. What we didn't want to do was try to do everything at this meeting and every meeting, and we, we are very mindful of time and want to make sure that we accomplish our goals. So I wanted to just kind of do the teacher thing and lay out the learning objectives for tonight before we move forward, and then at the end, we'll conclude again and also set us up for success, because the February 1st meeting is next Tuesday. So we'll be right back at it next week to do some more of that. Okay. So if there are no questions about the process, I'm going to ask you to grab a couple of things. We, we have some tools and toys on your table. You have a baggie that has posted notes, a highlighter, and a pen to write questions, notes, and things as we're going along, because we're going to try to take you through a big picture thing and then bring you back for questions. You have a booklet that probably says draft on every single page, if I did it correctly, because they are drafts. And I just want to remind the board, I want to remind our viewing public that we are dealing with drafts of information. And then we're going to give you some handouts, which are also drafts, and then, of course, we'll also make sure things are available to the public as well, because we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can be. So the first area we're going to start with is review of the revenue. So I have a couple of handouts that you don't have, so I'm going to send them your way, going that way, and that way. And this is on, we're starting with revenue. So this is all about the revenue, and we're going to ask that you kind of put them in order of, the first one we're going to talk about is the one that says state revenue projection. And then you might want to have handy to the side, since we've got a little room, there is a new state funding that's pretty wordy. It explains the new. And then we'll get to the income statement toward the end. So the first one says state revenue projection 22-23, along with a partner one of new state revenue funding, which is the wordy table document. And I am going to turn it over to our interim CFO, Ms. Monae Davis, who is on screen, to kind of talk us through, I've asked her to explain what these lines mean. Now, we recognize that we have veteran board members who understand all of this, but we also have members of the public, Mike's laughing, we also have members of the public who are, this may be their first time learning about our budget. So we want to do a little bit of, of explanation so that the public can also follow along as well as our board members. Ms. Davis.
Good evening. First, we're going to talk about, well, tonight, we're going to talk about our state revenue, which is the bulk of our revenue budget. And so the revenue, the state revenue is broken down by four categories. You have your standards of quality programs, which is, again, the bulk of our state revenue. And then you have your incentive programs, categorical programs, and a lot of refunded programs. But I really want to focus on the standards of quality programs, and just for informational purposes, I was going to ask Ms. Scott if she could explain what our SOQ positions are.
Good evening, everyone. SOQ, it stands for Standards of Quality, and is established in Virginia as the minimum educational program school divisions must provide. We get this funding every school year, and we are so appreciative of this funding. So currently, currently, we have 1396 positions in operating and cares. So out of that 1396, 768 are SOQ positions. This funding does not support our other staff, so we want to extend this to everyone, you know, just to make sure we are equitable. Now, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Monae.
Thanks. Okay, so when I talk about the SOQ funding, is this something we get every year? And let me just, we have our basic school aid in our sales tax, and that's just based on our ADM. Well, the sales tax is based on other things besides, it's, it's, it's more based on our, on our, I'll get that for you, but I had it, but it's not, it's not our ADM. And then our basic aid is our ADM. So that is the bulk of our standards of quality, and I will say that they only pay for those 768 positions, I believe, but that local match, which is 13 million. So between the basic aid, the basic aid is 22.3 million. The local match, which means the city has to pay for 13.4 million for us to receive that funding. So, and that's just for those basic SOQ positions. That's the bare minimums for educational programming in Virginia.
Ms., could we just take a pause? Because again, educating our community. So as we're looking at the chart and you see the revenue for 22-23, and you see something, like you said, the basic aid is, the division will get 22.3 million, but that's conditioned on the fact that we have to match it with 13.4 million. So we just don't get the money. We have to match funds in order to qualify, and as, as you can see, school board, almost all of those things have a local match to them as we go down there. A few of them that don't. So I think that's important for the community to know that, you know, sometimes when we hear we're getting money, it's a little quiet on, but you have to match it to get that, to get those funds.
And so, and that's for just, like I said, the basic minimums for education. And then you start getting into, I can share my screen if you don't mind. Oh, no, I can't. That's okay. Talk about it. We're looking at the same thing. So then I'm looking at some of the increases and decreases that we received this year. What new, we did get new funding, 156,000 for the remedial education for summer school. And if you look at the other sheet behind it, and like I said, this, like Dr. Ebers said, this is very wordy. This is the state's definitions of these funds. So basically, this is just extra funding for summer school support for that learning loss for at-risk kids. So after, after, so for the SOQ, besides that, it has special funding, which also has requirements. So vocational education is, and then gifted education, special education, textbooks, ESL or remedial, summer school, all of those are special funding where you have to provide another level on top of that basic to receive that revenue. So when we talk about vocational education, and I do want to pause a moment on that, because if you look, you'll see, we took kind of a hit, but when we did a little bit of research, we found that through, through the reporting that was done through remote instruction, it just reported it differently than it should have. We made the corrections with the VDOE, and it has gone to the budget office. So we're hoping to see those funds restored. I also want to take a look at special education, where if you look at that, we did get a $798,000 cut, which is pretty big. We were expecting that. We have a decrease there. It's actually something that's pretty good news. We want, we want to see that. One, we've, there was an inflated number at one point. We're trying to get it down, and it takes quite a bit to bring your numbers down. So that was actually good. It was, it was nice to see. Also, the state cut everyone with special education. I will say, and this may just be a pre-warning, and maybe something to keep in mind for the ask, is that whether the state cuts special education funding or not, it still has to be funded. So there is going to have, somebody's going to have to make up for that loss of funding for special education.
Davis?
Yes.
Okay. There's a, there's a delay. I just want to jump in, and again, being mindful that our, for some of our community members, this might be their, their first understanding of our budget, and you, you said it, you went quickly. So some of the funding is identified as gifted and talented, special education. There's something down there for at-risk ESL, preschool, at-risk four-year-olds. So sometimes folks will say, well, look, you're, you got 66 million, why can't you just move the money where you want to move it? Often, our funds come with categories and restrictions. So it's not as easy as saying, well, you have so much money, you should be able to, as much as it is us having to make sure that we allocate the money to some of these special areas. And you'll see, one of those special areas is a math reading specialist. It's one of the new fundings. It's not a lot of money, but it is identified in terms of being a new funding source for a specific area. So we did want to just make sure that our community not only understood the dollar amount that we received, but also that that dollar amount is broken down into various areas and often comes with a local match as well. And just going back over the CTE, because decreases make, make people nervous when you see them. So the CTE and the special education, the special ed, if you were on the board last year or the year before, you remember that we had a maintenance of effort concern that we were slowly chipping away so that we would be in compliance. This is a continuation of that compliance to make sure that we're in line with our maintenance of effort, which was a mismatch error that we had that was pretty huge a couple of years ago, but is taking us a couple of years to, to fix that. And as Ms. Davis said, the vocational ed is something that, when we were on hybrid and how the minutes were reported, because of the hybrid status affected this, but we have since corrected it to make sense, and the VDOE has the updated data. We haven't seen the updated funds, but they have the updated data for that. As you go down, you'll see somewhere towards, go ahead.
So when you say updated, what does that mean? So does that mean the number that we're looking at for vocational ed is incorrect or off?
Yeah. If you look at voc ed from last year to this year, you'll, you'll be like, oh, my goodness, how did we lose?
Yeah.
And they base it on minutes. So it looks like because of the hybrid and the, the, the count was only on the actual, they didn't count the remote learning.
Right.
So when we went back and looked at, what are, what are you counting? Once we counted the remote learning, that changes the funding, but this funding is not based on when we were in school last year and we had two days a week, two days of remote learning, and then we had Mondays. It's not reflected in here. So it, it would increase if they correct.
So these column headings are confusing me, because it says 21-22, which is the current year, right?
Correct.
And then 22-23. That's projected for, so they use last year's data to gain this year's money.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Okay, sorry, I missed that part, yeah. Well, la, so, but last year's data is 2021. Correct. Right. So is this column where we're seeing, pardon, forgive me, I, I get, so this 497-714 for vocational ed, is that reflective of 2021? Or? That's reflected of the year before, yes, the year before. That's the current money that we have in this current school year. Oh, okay. All right.
Dr. Gupta? Edwards, you're projecting about eight million increase in total revenues. Out of that, three and a half million is a construction money, so you take that out. It leaves four and a half million dollars in the bucket, but then you're asking for a $4 million of local match. So that doesn't make sense. So match means the revenue should go up by eight millions, you know what I'm saying? Then the local, locality will match another four million. So we should have about 11 million, 11.5 million left in the increase in revenue.
And I, and I totally understand what you're saying. So if I'm giving you eight, then I'm asking for eight, and the local match is, is a percentage, and it depends on each account what that percentage is. So it's not always dollar for dollar. So even though, if you look at it, you're right, our increase is eight million, but our local match is four, and if you go through each one separately, you'll, you'll be able to see it's not a dollar.
Out of that eight million, three and a half is out the door, because that's a construction money.
Correct.
And that doesn't require a local match. So to compare apples to apples, we got four and a half million net increase there, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then you're asking for a four, four and a half million net increase in revenue, and we are asking for a $4 million local match. So shouldn't that match, the net increase minus construction should have been about eight million, so that the local match will be four-four. Four is coming from state, four is coming from local. So the total difference between column one and column two, in my mind, should be about 11.5 million.
So first, this is not our calculations, this is state calculations, just so the community is aware. But if you go up to, let's go up to the prevention, intervention, and remediation. You will see that we received an increase from last year to this year of 30, 33,8, right? 33,844. But if you look at what the local match has increased, it's 57,813. And when I say each, each revenue line has a different percentage of what they decide local match is, it's not as clear-cut as just saying, if it, if it netted out to $4 million, then the local match has to be $4 million. And it's a form, it's formulaic. I know our spreadsheet makes it look all nice and pretty, but in actuality, there are formulas behind each one of these numbers that is where that calculation is coming, and this is a summary of what's on the CUP tool.
Dr. Carter?
Dr. Edwards, are we confident that we will get all of that decrease in the vocational ed, that the amount decreased, will we receive that back?
Am I confident that we will receive that back? I have nothing that 100% confirms that. I will tell you that there were a whole bunch of people who did a whole lot of work over the last couple of days to put in the information that was requested from DOE. So I'm confident that we put the information in. We're just waiting on DOE on their end.
And if it doesn't get put back, or a significant amount doesn't turn, then what, what happens?
We're going to have to do some realignment, so, yes. But as I said, I am very confident that we put in all the information that was requested of us.
What does vocational, what, what all does it?
That's the CTE of programs.
Just for clarification, before he, Ms. Morrison.
I just have a question about increase and decrease. If I look at primary class size for 2020, 21-22, it's 1.5, and 22-23, it's 1.8. So shouldn't that be an increase instead of a decrease? It's like primary class size.
Yeah, that, it should be, yes.
And it's also true of textbooks.
There might be a typo in.
I think the increase is not in parentheses, the decrease is in parentheses.
Yeah, it might be just the color.
Correct.
If you look at the column header, increase is just.
All right, that's what I didn't understand. Thank you. It should be, it should be colored black.
Okay. Yeah, that's just the color there. Thank you. That clarified.
Excellent, Ms. Morrison.
No, I just didn't understand.
Dr. Edwards, again, before we continue.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I understand the process. Did you want to go through all of that, then we ask questions, or are you comfortable with us doing?
Well, we're on revenue, so I'm comfortable with the revenue questions, so long as we stay on, on target with here. And I just, I really want to make sure that we're understanding the information that's in front of us before we move to the next step. And you will see, last year, we received 684,000 in no-loss funding, and then And then now we don't have that anymore. But then you'll see two, three lines down, re-benchmarking, hold harmless. So sometimes they move funding from one category to another category, call it something different, but still try to aim at doing, um, similar things on this, so. Um, and again, uh, Dr. Gupta, you pointed out, because we were gonna point out, that there is three point five million dollars in school construction, um, grant program. Three point five million is not enough to build a brand-new school, um, but it is, it's some construction money. And we did want the board to see what the VDOE intended for that, because it says school construction, but it's, when you actually read the, the fine print, which is pretty wordy, it even talks about things such as, um, renovations, technology, um, and other expenditures related to modernizing classroom equipment. So I want the public to understand that, you know, we think school construction, build a new building, but when you actually read the details, there's a little bit more in, in that as well.
Dr. Edwards, can I, so going back to my batch thing, looks like it's, uh, for every dollar, state is asking us to do sixty cents and they're doing four forty cents. Is that being, uh, trend all across? Because a lot of these things where the additional money is coming has a word, risk, at-risk, remedial. So this is, I'm assuming is as a result of learning loss or achievement gap increase as a result of coronavirus.
The, the local match?
No, no, in terms of the line items, you know, where the additional new monies are coming in and we got to make up for sixty cents on every dollar. Have the word like at-risk, remedial, uh, harmless. So is there a significance to those wording? It means it's coming as a result of learning loss, achievement gap, things like that?
Um, if I'm not mistaken, and I would have to check previous, uh, budget, pre-COVID-nineteen budgets, at-risk money we had in the past. I don't think that's a new one. Um, the hold harmless and the no-loss funding are probably a result, the rep result of the budgeting and the effect of, um, COVID-nineteen, as you said. The remedial summer school is specifically for the result of coronavirus. So there are things in here that are new that are as a result of what we've experienced over the last two years.
The reason I'm looking, at-risk has doubled. It has gone from two million to almost four, two mil, two point one-five million to two, four point six, more than double.
More money in it, yes, yeah.
Because.
And remember, this is in our operating, not our care, care's funding is separate from this as well, so. Okay, um, and then somewhere in the middle, there's a compensation supplement. Uh, and we just wanted to point that out, that when, and it goes back to what Ms. Scott said, when you hear that the budget has a, an average of a five percent raise and you look at that compensation supplement, so here's the money we're gonna give you for the raise for half of your employees. Because, uh, about half of our employees are SOQ-funded. So it's a funding formula that calculates how much you get, but it's based on SOQ-funded, which I, I forget her numbers, but it sounded like she said seven hundred versus thirteen hundred. Um, so the rest of the money, when we get to salary proposals, comes from us and what we do and how we, we allocate funds internally to cover, um, salary increases for all of our employees. It's not just SOQ-funded.
Wait, can't Dr. Senha?
Um, do we have a sense of how Lynchburg City compares with other divisions in the proportion of positions that are SOQ versus non-SOQ-funded?
Um, I don't have that at the top of my head.
Is that available, like through VDOE?
You probab-, if you could dig for it, you probably could get it. Um, but, uh, again, off the top of my head, I don't have other divisions, um, positions.
So how much money are we losing as a result of grocery tax going up? Because they're, they're, they're pushing it back about three hundred, three thousand. And it's a hold, so it means hold is only for one year. Uh, will next year we be in a dip because of that? How much will that be?
I don't know off the top. I will get that answer for you in terms of what next year's budget looks like, um.
Okay, that, that's a revenue line, line which may have a significant impact on our operations next year. So if we over-commit ourselves this year, then the next year may be, uh, difficult to catch up or backfill that gap.
Dr. Edwards?
Yes.
Actually know the answer to that one. Uh, with the grocery tax, um, this year being cut, uh, on January first of twenty-twenty-three, um, we got the three hundred and three. Next year, it looks like it's about doubled. Now look at the, um, expected revenue from twenty-four, and that's, you know, that's as of, I mean, Governor Northam's most recent budget, but it looks like it is doubled to seven forty-nine, little over.
But.
Okay. That's enough right here.
But to your point, didn't we hear today that one of, um, and this will be after Northam's budget goes through, one of, um, one thing we heard today that Governor Youngkin will probably propose tax cuts, one being the grocery tax. So for the long haul, we do have to anticipate. And whether the state will find another revenue stream to backfill that, we don't know. Probably not likely. Um, so that is a good point.
Yeah, we got to be careful. They give us a little carrot so that we, we go to sleep right now as politicians, you know? And then when, by the time we wake up from the remonition, it'll be painful because all that backfilling of money is not available. And that's my fear, two years out, it may be.
Yeah?
Okay, so now that we have a clear understanding of the revenue at this moment in time, I like to say it that way because we may experience some changes as we talked about, um, Dr. Senha. Um, the next thing we wanted to share with you is our income statement. Because one of the things that we heard this board say is we'd like to know where we are as we propose where we're going. So again, tonight is about salaries and benefits. So the income statement that we're providing is about current salaries, um, and benefits and where we are, um, right now in terms of, um, uh, current employees with that. So looking at it as broken apart, uh, broken down by instruction, administration, transportation, maintenance. Um, other, I'm gonna let Ms., Ms. Davis explain to you other, because that's probably gonna jump out as why is that, um, small and why is facilities small when you look at the other categories? Ms. Davis?
Okay, so, um, our other is, um, basically just a supplemental, uh, position. That's the only thing in here, which is why it's so small in, um, the other non-instruction. But then our facilities, that is our project manager. Um, we, this, the, the city actually pays for him. So that will be, um, balanced at, by the end of the year. Right now, it's just being encumbered. His whole payroll is encumbered. So once the year is over, it'll be at a zero balance.
Did we split him, Ms. Davis? We used to split him, right?
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I know he doesn't come out of our budget at all.
Okay.
We take it now.
Who are the non-instruction?
So that was the facilities person who does the project management.
Yeah, but not, we weren't talking about number six.
The other, um, it, it's basically, um, delivery driver that is very, very part-time.
Dr. Gupta?
Uh, Ms. Davis, you know, as I drove my trash-collecting truck around town, I, I see some, a morale problem. So I know, and you don't have to answer because I'm putting you on spot. What do you hear about sal-, because the discussion tonight is about salaries. So what do people complain most about salaries in Lynchburg? What is the, uh, issue which comes up and, which affects, uh, Dr. Edwards or either one?
Not enough salary. It's usually, um, and competitive salaries compared to other divisions.
All across the board or certain areas of our operation?
Um, I would say competitive all across the board for, for the most part. Um, what we are experiencing right now is, uh, in some cases, what even money can't fix is time, right? So you, we're, we're paying folks to give up their prep period. We're paying folks to, after you gave up your prep period, if you're still teaching and you're running across to the class next to you during your teaching class, we're giving you some extra money to do that, and they're tired. So some of the morale, um, and I'm not, I'm not dismissing salary staff, so, don't, but some of the morale is due to exhaustion and just, I, I, the, the day is very long for our staff in terms of the work that they're doing right now. Um, and, and that makes it, makes it a little difficult. Um, part of that is, again, I come to work and if my day is my day, it might be a great day, but if my day is my day and Dr. Coleman's out, so my day is my day and Dr. Coleman's day because I have to cover, um, and, you know, I, I don't, I don't mind covering, but it's just exhausting. So we're seeing some of that. Any questions on current, the current income statement?
Mr. Harvey?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, can I get a clarification? My understanding is these are our budgeted numbers. So these are our budgeted salaries, our budgeted employee, uh, and bene-, benefits, um, et cetera. These are not our actual expenditures. Am I correct in that? This is our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, um, salary budget, not our actual salary expenses.
I'll let Ms. Davis answer it.
Well, that first, that first column is our budgeted. And then that second column is our encumbered, which means their employees, uh, the current employees, where their salary is, is encumbered. And then, um, the next two are our actuals. One is our period, which means the month, and then one is our year-to-date. Um, but the way I ran the report, they should both be equal. Um, so it's the encumbrance plus the actual that we consider our actuals. We're, we're anticipating the encumbrance, um, to be an actual. So with an available, with those two, you add those two together, and against our adjusted budget, we have the available balance of three point six.
And so, so that, that's the magic number that I would like for us to keep in mind, that there is three point six million dollars that is not spent this year in salaries.
And benefits.
And benefits.
And that's, that benefit and benefits is going to be important.
That's correct.
Because part of the strategy, and I know this is not for a discussion tonight because we're gonna bring it up next week, but part of the discussion in how we cover losses and benefits is we have money in benefits for employees that may or may not be here or may be here and they didn't take benefits or their spouse has benefits. So what we budget it for might be a little bit higher. And that's how we've been covering those losses, not necessarily a long-term strategy. Um, so that'll come up next week as to how do we, how do we handle that. Okay. Okay, now to the, to the work.
Let me ask you this, uh, board, we're the definitive board, we're taking a quick five-minute break.
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's do that and we'll get right into the next. Let's do that and we'll get right into the next.
Okay.
Mr. Trolster will wait for him.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
We can find in neighboring areas and others that are close like ours to kind of come up with, what would our pay tables look, look like as we're moving through? So that, that was part of what we did and we had done that when we first presented to you the steps that we wanted when we were collapsing pay tables. So that was a couple of months ago that we did that work. I'm gonna go on, just do a couple more, bear with me, just, just, and I think this is helpful for the public to also hear and understand. Our next person is an instructional assistant, which we can find on page four E. And this particular instructional assistant is on step F, currently making $12.73 an hour. Now I want the board to remember, this current year, we added a dollar to instructional assistants. So this was at the start of the year, $11.73 around there, but now it's 12 at, in the current year. And again, if you go down that third column and find step F, sorry.
E.
Oops, I'm on the wrong.
E.
I'm sorry, step E, my fault, step E.
Change your, change your sheet.
Your T.
Yeah, step E, I'm sorry, that should be step E, my bad.
That's okay.
That's what happens, but I'm going quick.
That's alright.
If you find step E going down, you'll see 12.96. And then next year, this person, this individual will move to $13.64. And you can see that increase is about a 5.25% increase. Now, you might be saying, but the other person received 11 and this one 5. This is a particular pay table, a particular group that received a dollar this year and their counterparts on the same, in the same area did not. So we accounted for trying to level some of the playing field a little bit. And then we could do bus driver, which is on 5A, because bus drivers are the one that we talked about. So if we look at this particular bus driver who is on step C, currently making $14.13 an hour. Next year, will move up to $15.14, which is about a 7.5% increase going across. And so as not to look like I'm not being as transparent as possible, I also did a teacher and an administrator so that we could see how this works. So just bear with me as we do a 10-month teacher on 7A. And this particular teacher happens to be on, and the teacher tables are a little different than the classified tables, but this particular teacher happens to be on step 8. Currently making, where am I, here we go, 43, 124. And would move to step 9 at 45, 345, 354, which is a 5.17% increase. And while we're on a teacher table, it's a different table, the increments in the teacher table are not equal. So they aren't all a 2%, 2% jump. If you just scroll down the teacher table, you'll see differences in percentages in the teacher table, which we did not change the increment. We did not touch the teacher table to collapse it or do anything like we did with the admin, or sorry, with the classified tables to do that. And we're gonna come back to these, so don't, don't, that's why I gave you post-its, in case you had a burning question, just, just stick it there. The last one I wanna do, because we do talk about administrators, I pulled the elementary principal, I do believe, on page 8M, just so you can see what that looks like. This particular principal is on step C6, which is currently a little over 79,000. And they would go to 82, steps D7, which is a 3.54% increase. So remember, I kinda use 5% as a baseline average, which means some folks will be over, over, and some folks will be slightly under. And the slightly unders are our higher-wage employees and the slightly overs or more overs are our lower-wage employees. So that is, I wanted to make sure every board member understood how to read a chart and if anybody's looking, how to, how to do that. Now, on the front of each section, so if we go back to page 3, I've listed for you what the Virginia proposed increase in minimum wage is. Because remember, we're going back to our, our lower-wage employees. And effective January 2022, which is right now, this should be, the minimum wage is $11 an hour. So we have met that. Effective 2023, it's going to be $12 an hour. And if you notice, we have several pay tables, several groups of employees where the starting salary was less than 12. Our goal was to get it up to, at minimum, $13.11, is what we estimated. And then you can see the increases to 13.50 and then to $15 an hour. If you go to page 3A, there's more information on this table for the board to consider. And this, it just happens to be classified D+ to the new Schedule A, which is for the 2023 school year. You will see to the right, who are the folks on this pay table? Well, we have the auto servicemen and we had the head custodian 1. The head custodian 1 is highlighted in yellow because we had compression where head custodian 1 was making less than custodian. So we moved the head custodian 1 off of the D+, did not put them on Schedule A, and moved them up to Schedule B. So anytime you see a highlight, that was our attempt to go back and say, we don't want compression, we don't want the head or the lead, in most cases, to be earning less than in the, in the stepwise progression. So you'll see some of that. The other thing you will see on these tables is up top, there is a range. And that is a range based on individual steps of increase. So the people on D+ have a range of an increase anywhere from 5.28 to 14.57%. Typically, the higher percent increases are at the lower end of the pay table, the 11.67, $12. And then the higher ends are at the bottom end of the pay table where you see $17.44. There's also an unweighted average. And what the board needs to understand about our pay tables is there's not equal people on each step. And in some cases, there's only one person on this whole table. So we just did an unweighted average to say, if there were one person on each step, what would that unweighted average be? And that unweighted average for this pay table is $9 and, I'm sorry, 9, 9.97%. And then at the very, very bottom of every pay table, there are people who go over the top. So they're, they've exceeded the steps. And in some cases, we've frozen their salaries. We've recommended a 1.5% increase for our employees who are over the top and have noted them in red. So the work for us tonight is to look, and I've done them in sections. So this first section is every employee that we have, every position, I should say, that we have, that is currently starting under $12 an hour. And then you'll see on each section what we have proposed as a percent increase, the unweighted average. You'll see a list of what positions are on that particular pay table. In some cases, it's, it's 1. At the end of this, should the board agree to this, this section where we have B+, D+, C+, E, F, and all of those will all be together on one pay table called Schedule A. And we've moved folks off to keep a little bit of hierarchy when necessary. And then that would be the proposed increase. Now, keep in mind, we did this over multiple years. So next year might look a little different in terms of going forward with the increase, but we, we just wanted to focus on the current FY '23, not '24, '25, and '26. So what I, what I would like for the board to do is to kind of look at this and you sort of make decisions about, does this make sense? Is this, is this where we want? And I know we've, we've talked about bus drivers, you've received probably emails from custodians and secretaries and staff members. Is this an adequate proposal for the salaries? And the reason why we're starting with salaries first is because that makes up probably 80% of our budget. These are our existing employees and we're trying to plan for what does an increase for our existing employees cost? And if you were to say yes to this, and I'm not asking that you say yes to this right now, but Ms. Davis has calculated by moving all of our existing folks and even when we have vacant folks where we think they, that position might be, to give a cost of what it costs to do this type of increase. So Ms. Davis, if we were to do this, this book of change, what would that range us?
Still muted.
Yeah, you're still muted.
Always, always, okay. So the total amount for salaries would be about 3.3 and then an additional benefit of about almost $900,000 for a total of 4.2 million dollars needed for this, to implement this salary increase.
Alright, so that was a lot. And we wanted to try to be mindful of the questions that you asked us and the goals that you wanted. This is in order, the book is arranged in order of lowest wages to highest wages, not necessarily how our pay tables are arranged. So if you notice, the first pay table is D+, not necessarily B+, because D+ is probably our lowest wage. And we also migrated in school nutrition, where we, where they were appropriately placed according to what we had. Bus assistance, bus drivers, and bus trainers in each area. And then the sections, section 1 is all of our employees whose current pay scale starts at less than $12. Section 2 is all of our employees whose current pay scale starts somewhere between $12 and $13. Section 3 is all of our employees whose pay scale starts somewhere between $13 and $15. And I purposely did it that way because we have a mark of 12, 13.50, and 15. And I know the question came up that said, how many or what are you looking at if everybody went to 15? The other thing that we did is as we started with the lower pay tables, instead of compressing, we spread it out across. So as we changed the first couple ones, it flowed through every other pay table going forward so that we wouldn't have the degree of compression, nor would we have a situation where a supervisor is, is starting salaries less than the person for whom they supervise. Okay, I think I've done enough talking and now there'll be lots of questions.
I see Dr. Edwards, you have done a remarkable job in terms of giving $4,000 average increase across the board. You know, that's how I look at it, whether you have a dollar increase or whether you got a 3% increase. You know, when I calculate the numbers, I see about 4 to 4.5 thousand dollar increase. But the point is, the state, and I don't want to sound like a socialist or a communist, so I'm giving the disclaimer, the state minimum wage is 13.01. We're basically saying that's our goal. The college graduation requirement for a student is 2.0 GPA. So if I work with a 2.0 GPA and I don't have much hope in life, you know, to progress, that doesn't mean poor GPs don't do well, but that becomes my target. It means you'll never get a B or A. So are we going for the lowest common denominator, you know, the lowest figure, and not trying to be a district which is different and pays well? Because the inflation rate right now is 6.8%, 6 to 6.8, no more, depending on which figure you take. So these numbers will put employees in a loss, as you know, compared to, in, in, will not make up for any difference in terms of their lives. That's why I ask you, where do we stand out? Does this thing stands out? Do we make a splash in this budget?
So in, in doing the goals, we could have done a splash and said, we need 8, 9, 10 million dollars to make it work, if, if that's where we, where we were. So we did not go that radical, yet. I will say, Dr. Gupta, for January 2023, the minimum is $12 an hour. For 20, right now it's 11. For 2023, it would be $12 an hour. And we were trying to get to a minimum of 13. It's not much, I'm not saying that that's a lot of money, but we're not, we're not settling for the minimum of just saying whatever the state wage was. And we tried to systematically plan to start moving folks closer and up. And there were, like I said, as you go through this, you'll see some employee positions that are highlighted that have been pulled out of a section that they're currently in, like bus drivers, and moved to a completely different pay table that's at a higher wage to be more competitive. I think the question for us comes when you're talking about 1,300 employees and trying to get everybody to a, to a place where the wages are extremely highly competitive, where we are just the best and the best, is gonna take a little bit more, a little bit more money to do that. And then the question is, how do we sustain that year after year when we're starting to just grow our budget with that?
Dr. Edwards, thank you, thank everyone for, I mean, this is a lot of, lot of work here. However, I, I agree with what Dr. Gupta is referring to. I mean, what we're being told is that we're looking to roughly increase salaries by about 5%. We're also being told that the state's gonna give us about 5%. The state's gonna also give everybody else about 5%. So if we're not competitive now, you know, a rising tide rises all ships. Everybody else's ship's gonna rise too, the same amount that we're rising. We're not gonna, we're not getting any better. And if we in LCS wanna say that, you know, we're the premier system and we wanna draw the, the best of the best and pay them a competitive salary, we can't do the status quo. So I think we do need to be, as a board, thinking about, what is that splash? What, what, what level of splash are we comfortable with as a board, undertaking and defending to our community? To say that we want the best school system, we want the best teachers, we wanna retain the best teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, Dr. Carter.
I believe, I remember a conversation we had a month or so ago where we were asked what the starting point would be. And I think I was the only one that said 15. So now I see there may be some differences. But I wanna go back to this. When we look at the 10-month teacher on 7A, and I know that there was conversation, conversation, I don't hear it as much now, but would this increase help with the teachers, the 25, the 20, the teachers with 25 years of experience that was promised a lump sum several years ago? Would this help them?
Well, if you, again, the, the teacher table is slightly different in how the increments are. So if you go down to about step 26 going to 27, there's a, there's a little bubble, there's a big bubble in there for those teachers. If you go to step 30, there's a pretty big bubble. Step 32, there's a bubble. And that's, that's just building off the existing, adding percentages to the existing teacher tables. It does not go back 11 years and add compounded salary to it. And I think one of the concerns that staff had is once they get to, to the top, that they would be frozen. So the other thing that we tried to do was just add a, like I said, a 1.5% increase so folks wouldn't think that I'm just stuck at wherever that salary table leads me to.
And this, and if, and given this example, is it 3.6?
That's for the person who's on step 33. And then there, if you're like 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, or been here 40 years and so on.
And another question, is there, when we move, like the head custodian moved to Schedule B, is there, is there like the new list of Schedule Bs in here?
Well, we had to do that by person. So we took whatever their salary was on their previous one and then had to physically move them on B and then put them on a new step. So we had to roll them to a new step on, let's just say, I went from Schedule B to, I don't know, L, right? What would have been L. So we had to roll them to L and then increase them to see what their particular salary. So each one of them looks different and it really is by person when we had to pull the people off. Because if I was the head custodian on, on G, then you did something different with me than if I was the head custodian on E. So that's why it's not as easy. And we wanted to point it out as a highlight, because they're almost hand-done in the system so we could see where they were.
Dr. Edwards, thank you and your team for this work. One of the things that I've spoken about is that we also provide benefits from our budget. And if we took that amount of money and added it to salaries, it would greatly increase the amount of money that we are providing in terms of benefits. And I think at our last finance meeting, you gave us a, a sheet that showed that with this salary, if you added the health benefits, it would increase that. And I think that's important to show our community that we are doing everything we can with retirement and health coverage and, and benefits. And that would be something, I think, at some future point that we might want to share.
So those, the documents that Mrs. Morrison are referring to are publicly available on Board Docs under the Finance Committee meeting. And since we're gonna talk about benefits next week, starting next week, we will bring those documents too. The ones you went over today about revenue are also publicly available on Board Docs under the Finance Committee meeting, which was last, last week, I believe. So you can find those documents, but we'll also bring them back so that they can be publicly available.
Thank you.
Dr. Edwards, you, you brought up the bubble and I noted that. Could you explain the 11.404% bubble on, what is it, step 26? And I see some other bubbles throughout those charts. What, I just, I don't understand.
For teacher tables?
Yeah, I don't understand the basis for the bubble. This is 7A.
So way back when in teacher table land, there used to be a school of thought that talked about how money was added to a teacher table, where you put your money. So there used to be incentive bonus, if you were here for five years, there's a bubble. If you were here for 15 years, there's a bubble. So those were built into tables. As years go on, they stay in the table and move and migrate. You can't just eliminate them because it, it causes somewhat of a, you can, but it's a lot of work to, to eliminate that. So when we looked at our existing tables, which were put back in place in 2018, we sort of restarted the tables. And then we added, remember, we increased salary this year once we got out of the, the freeze and so on and so forth. When we added the percentage on to the table to get the average of 5, minimum of 5, that's why you ended up with one step that has that. That would have classified as an incentive step way back in the day, but it's still built into the table. And even if you froze salaries, if you notice from going from, let's say, we did nothing and went from step 26 to step 27, that person would go from 54 to 58, even if we did nothing and added no additional money to it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I hear exactly what you're saying. That's the way I, you know, share with my staff what their total benefits package is. But a, but a really good friend of mine shared with me something today. He said, he said, if you have a custodian, single mom, three kids, they can't feed their kids the benefits package. Based on where their salary is, they're low income. Therefore, they're eligible for Medicaid health, health benefits. So the value of those health benefits, it's just not there. It's not there to some of the folks that are on our pay tables where salaries can be. I'm, I'm gonna be a little more frank. I, I do appreciate all this, but to me, a lot of this is starting to be just kind of smoky mirrors. I think we need to be talking about the big splash, folks. I, I would rather us as a board decide what we are comfortable with doing and then say, go back and rework the tables to that. I think we talked about, I agree with you, Dr. Carter. I think our base should be that $15, absolutely. And the reason why I say that is because, again, all other school systems are gonna raise. And if, and if we are talking about, we wanna be out in front, we gotta, we, we gotta do it right. We, we talk about it every single board meeting. We go around and we talk about how we appreciate our staff.
Alright, Mr. Harvey, your point is certainly on the floor, but Ms. Morrison, I believe, Dr. Carter.
Dr. Edwards, could you clarify what, when we talk about steps, like step 1, 2, 3, is that years of, of experience or is that?
In, in some cases, yes, it's a little more, more clear on the teacher end.
Yes.
But remember, compression got factored into this. So we had some folks who had one year of experience compressed with some folks who had seven, who were on the same step. So when we move them, they're still, they're, they're getting a higher wage, but that compression from last year and the year before still exists.
I just, I think that's important.
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Carter.
Regarding, when we implement this, will this be, the salary increase will be on a rotational basis like it is where one group gets it one year and the next year?
Okay. So, and I forgot to mention it. So if you look at any classified one, I just happen to be on 4E. If you notice where I put the salaries, there's a space between, on any of these classified ones. There's like step E, then a space, step F, and then a space or, or a couple spaces, depending upon where, where the next level went. Two years ago, or in 2019, 18, 19 school year, we implemented a two-year, every other year when we get the re-benchmarking money, how to move folks. So in an even year like now, so this is FY '22, everyone would move, every classified person would move to an odd year, because in the odd years is when we get the money, the, the biennial money. So we're guaranteed some money to increase the salary. So we made the increase on the odd year for all of our staff members. And then the second year is more of a frozen or an adjustment year. So that's what you see here. That's not true on the teacher table. On the teacher table, if you go back to the teacher table, it's a little different in that there's more closely represent their years of experience on a table.
And I have to say, this is wonderful work, you can follow it. And it also helps with transparency. We always, if we don't go into the details, then it's said that we're trying to not share. So we do this to share. And the other thing is, as I said, I know a month ago, Dr. Edwards asked for direction and everyone, it was a nine-to-one vote, said we start at a certain amount that, that was recommended by the superintendent. So to have her go back now and say, let's change it, I think would be unfair. That was the time that we should have, I mean, it was, I was the only one that looked like I was crazy saying, let's go to 15, and everyone else said, no, no, we can't do that because of this, because of this. So now we've given her directions and said, let's start from this. So now we're gonna change it, we can't keep changing. We, we need to solidify this budget because she's gonna have to give numbers to the city manager. So we should have said 15 and they could have started with 15.
Dr. Carter, your point is well-taken. I am, as the chair, willing, however, to entertain, Mr. Harvey is suggesting a splash. Now, the sustainability of all of this has been important to us across the years as we've been doing this budget. Our local effort is what it is, has been. It's been level funding basically over the last few years. We were with someone from Roanoke today and they transferred $7 million a month. Am I not right, Dr. Sinha? We don't get that kind of local effort here in Lynchburg. Where is your pleasure? Dr. Carter has made her case about sticking with where we are. Is there any support for a splash? Alright, I appear to be in additional support. There appear to be any additional support. Dr. Edwards, what else do you need us to do?
I have another question.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Ms. Morrison.
That's all right. I just, can an employee opt out of receiving benefits and receive the money instead?
Increase salary? I don't, I've not done that.
Okay. I just asked because I was thinking.
That's a great question. I mean, is it possible? Why can't they do that?
I just, I know that question was asked.
We have not entertained that and I would have to figure that one out in terms of...
I was going to say, I'm not aware of any...
Anybody that...
Anybody that's...
I do that.
And you take insurance is optional. But that would be about it. And that's usually, you don't get a bump for not taking insurance, so.
All right. Dr. Gupta, then Dr. Carter.
I think Dr. Brennan had his head up in the...
Well, if he did, then Dr. Brennan? No, no. Okay, very good, Dr. Brennan, please go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I did not have my hands up. I'm fine.
Okay, but if you did, I would be delighted to...
Thank you so much.
Dr. Gupta, then Dr. Carter.
I think, going back to the discussion we had that day, my point was, we don't peg ourselves to $1 amount, whether it's 15 or 16. So, the word splash here is, you don't start with just 15 number or 16 number, as I presented to the board last time, but the counties are paying just in case of school drivers, different wages. That becomes your benchmark for discussion and planning. Because if you want to be competitive, you got to beat the competition. Otherwise, I look at this budget and it's the same old, same old. So, next August rolls in, the school bus drivers are not there, the buses, kids are waiting for the buses. So, what have we changed from one budget year to the next budget year? Have we found a solution to one single problem? May it be through compensation? I don't know. You see, I'm saying, so as a board, you basically go through this. And I know, Dr. Edwards, I feel bad because this is a lot of work, but as a solution to this committee, when we ask for a $4 million additional on top of what we had last year, what are we doing things differently? Same question I asked when we raised the tuition. Are we giving them a hug? Are we giving them free books to raise the tuition by five, six percent? You know what I'm saying? It's the same thing when you ask for more money. What are we doing differently compared to next year? Have we found any solutions?
So...
Problems which existed, which requires more money this year.
So, if I could address your first thing, same old, same old. In previous budgets, if we had a 5% increase, you wouldn't see these tables. You'd just see a 5% increase. So, one of the reasons why I did a range and an unweighted average is for the board to see that we purposefully have, like whoever's on D-plus, a 9.7% increase. We added a 10% increase to the salaries of the lower wages. We were intentional about doing those kinds of things. That is not what we did last year. Last year, you got a 5%, you got a 5%, you got a 5% and you got a 5%. Didn't matter whether or not you were high wage or you were low wage. So, in terms of what we're doing, I don't want us to be misrepresented. I don't want my staff to be misrepresented, that we did not go out and try to add ranges of, and that's why we did the detail, so that you could see that, you know, someone who was making 1167 has gone up to 1337. And with regard to what direction you did give me, you did give me direction on pay tables and it was $12.59 was the base. That was before we increased the bus drivers and the assistants by a dollar and the bus assistants by 50 cent. So, we went back and said, "We can't use 1259 anymore because we've already increased wages for some employees. We need to go back and say, 'What about the custodian? What about the secretary who didn't get that dollar increase that other folks got, who are also positions, if you look at our vacancy rate, we don't have enough custodians? Teachers need to come into clean rooms as well so that they're not, you know, dealing with that.'" So, we went back and said, "Well, we need to up it above 1259." That's where we went to the next one, to 1311 for those employees. So, it's not same old, same old. It's not exactly what we've done in the past. It's not an even spread of just a rate. Now, we also know we have to, come to you all, and then we have seven other people that we have to go to City Council and ask for money. So, we wanted to start with, this is our baseline of where we think we can go while also being mindful that we're trying to increase our salaries. And like I said, we did have the starting rates for other positions in other, in other counties. And in some cases, you'd be shocked that they are lower than we are right now. And we still are increasing our salaries. I think we talked about the bus drivers, the bus drivers, the bus drivers. But what I, what I would like you to do is between pages 3A and 6A, if you did this, these are all of the employees that we would be adjusting to get to Schedule D. Our Schedule D, because we thought about splash, our Schedule D starts at 1594 an hour. So, we would need to take all of these people and adjust them to be on Schedule D to 1594. And unless you want compression, then we need to take all these people and adjust them so that they're all not on 1594 and above. So, that's why we broke it apart so that the board could see, well, about how many positions are we looking at for this wage, this wage, this wage, and this wage? You can certainly look at something, I happen to be on 6A, and say, those people on 6A, where you have an average of 3.29 to 6.28, we want that to be higher and then we can adjust accordingly. But there was a method and an intentionality to increase salaries for our lower wages and the administration did work very hard to try to work with what we think are going to be some confines in terms of just money. But again, I'm going to ask this board, I hear you all as individuals, but I'm not listening until you give me direction as a full board because I can't act on any one individual. So, I do need some kind of consensus, which is what you gave me last time. And yes, we, we, we were, when we were working, we said, "Dr. Carter, Schedule D." We actually call that your schedule because you did say you wanted everyone at $15 an hour. But as a full board, I do need you all to give us direction on what to do so that we can go back and do the work. We don't want to disappoint you and feel like we're not listening to you, but we also know you're a governing body. And as a governing body, we need a voice from the governing body so that we don't feel bad that we didn't meet Mr. Harvey's needs, Dr. Gupta's needs, Dr. Carter's needs, Ms. Morrison's needs, you know, Dr. Brennan's individual needs. So, please help us do our work more efficiently by deciding as a governing body what we want to do.
I recognize the two. I think we hear you. What are our options?
Well, this 4.3 million, Ms. Manay, is what this, that's your base right now. So, we're looking at a compensation supplement of, what did we get? 1.6, I think, is in here for a compensation supplement, which means we're finding, yeah, 1.6. We're finding the rest. If we want to increase this, if that's what the board wants to do, which we are willing to do, we just need the governing body to tell us to do that, we're going to, we're going to do that. And the reason why we want to do this first is because we have a whole list of what other folks said. For example, we want to expand pre-K. Well, we might not be able to entertain expanding pre-K if this is the priority. We want to add, you know, expand virtual school. We want to add, I think you heard a resident talk about the mental health, restorative justice positions. We're going to have to make decisions because these are our right now folks. These are folks who are with us right now. So, we need to solve this so that we have an idea of what we're working with so that when we get to next week and the week after that, we can make decisions about other things that are also in the operating budget.
All right. Ms. Morrison, I do remember, if it was not this year, I mean, last year or the year before, you said that we need to fix this, we need to get it right for teachers, et cetera. So, board, at the end of the day, what is the will of the board to get this right? But Dr. Gupta and Mr. Harvey would like to speak.
I have a question and a comment. The question, let me put the comment first. The over-the-top increase is recommended at 1.5%. So, if I have given my life and time to the school district and stayed here for 30 years, so my average increase is less than the, my peers' increase is my assumption, correct? Because if I'm making, let's say, $100,000, I know nobody's making $100, so don't take me wrong on the camera, but it's easy to calculate. So, that's a $1,500 increase. Whereas, as I told you, my numbers tell me it's about a $4,000 increase across the board, whether you call it 10% or 5%, you know, in terms of real dollar amounts. So, is that intentional or is this some law requiring us to do that? Or is the budget constrained?
There's no law requiring it. And again, our strategy could have just been 5% for everybody and we could have calculated that. But what we thought, we heard you all say and also our employees, is that we have a lot of employees on the lower end. So, we, the higher percentages, the more money we try to add to the lower end while also being mindful that we have employees who are here, who have dedicated their lives, who, once they received over-the-top, received nothing in some cases. So, we didn't want to do nothing, but we were trying to be mindful. And by over-the-top, each pay table has an over-the-top. I don't want you to think over-the-top is just an administrator. It's at the bottom of the pay table. And we had to start somewhere. So, that was a decision that we made collectively as a group to how to address multiple, multiple goals.
So, that brings to my two questions. How much will it cost to make the over-the-top fair at par with everybody else? That's number one. And in the same line, if you go with this, your base analysis of salaries, how much additional money are you looking from the city of Lynchburg, City Council?
Okay. So, the first question is how much to get over-the-top the same as everybody?
In terms of percentage, because you...
Okay. So, first of all, even as I look at, I'm on 4C, the D, the person on D is getting 8.26, the person on E is getting 7.32, the person on F is getting 6.35. So, when I'm trying to make them the same, I, these are already not the same. The people who make the least amount of money are getting the higher wage. Now, if you're saying, "We want them the same," then give me a percentage that says, "We want everybody to get 7% or we want everybody to get 5%." Then I can make it the same. I'm not sure how to do a same without having a percentage. I don't, I don't think, or maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah. What I was looking was, you had a, in your comments, you made that teachers were getting an average of about 4%?
Teachers are very different depending upon what step they're...
What's the average increase and that will be the over-the-top baseline?
It's on the sheet. So, if you look at the, each sheet has its own unweighted average. So, if you go to the Teacher 1, which is on 7A, that's 10 months teachers, the unweighted average, assuming that there was one teacher on each step or equal number of teachers on each step, is 5.03. So, if you're saying you want the over-the-top for teachers to be 5.03, and then if we go way, 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 way back to 3F, which is our support assistant custodian delivery person, their unweighted average is 10%. So, would I make the over-the-top for the, those people on that table 10%? Is that what you're saying?
No. What I'm saying is, if I'm over-the-top, I don't want to be under the mountain with 1.5% because it's basically sequentially, if I stay for five more years in the school district or two more years at this budget cycle, I'll fall behind. You know what I'm saying? There will be no more over-the-top. Slowly, I'm sliding down the top because the incremental increase is not catching up year after year after that. The percent and a half, and then a percent and a half in two years, basically, I got my base increase.
So, that, that's a different pay scale philosophy that says, if you look at our pay scales, they end at Q. What you're saying is, those pay scales can go all the way down to Z and AA and BB. Just keep them going. That way, nobody ever taps out at over-the-top. They, they still just keep getting a percentage over and over and over again. Is that...
I don't know. Pay scales are confusing for me. Forgive me. You know, I just, but I just look at from a raw perspective, percent and a half increase, percent and a half. So, if I'm sitting there, if I'm making $100,000, I got 1,500 now and I'll get about 1,500, 1,600 next year, right? And so, I'm falling behind with that over-the-top. So, slowly, in three years, if I stay with it, or four years, I may not be over-the-top. I may be somewhere near the top in terms of salary.
All right.
With the percentage increase. And my second question was, how much are you asking for the City Council for this base salary?
I have not come up with a City Council number because in my number is the rest of the work that we have to do, which is the, the program. So, if we add another 15, $25,000 to our program for CTE, if we add another preschool, it's kind of a total package budget. This is one part of what we have to do, but this is the biggest part of what we have to do. And then we'll figure out what we can manage and what we need going forward.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I understand it, something Dr. Edwards said this evening is that available balance, that 3.6 that I asked everybody to remember, that number is our unpaid salaries and unpaid benefits for unfilled positions. Although the positions have gone unfilled, the work has still been done and that's been done by our staff. And what I'm being told is that we use that money to help compensate for health benefits when that cost exceeds what we take in.
In the benefits line?
In the benefits line. So, my understanding is, we have money across the street for that specific purpose and we are, we are unable to contribute to that money because that money pretty much stays the same because we don't access it. I'm looking at 3.6 sitting there in our budget and I'm looking at 4.2 to give us this minimum piece right here, no splash. So, you know, roughly, I'm looking at $600,000. I think we could come up with $600,000 out of our budget as we're sharpening our pencil to make this happen as a minimum. That's why I feel like we can do more. I, you know, I'm reminded, each year, I'm the one who says, "We need to go to defend our budget to City Council. Let them be the ones to tell us no." But we need to be fighting for our staff. And doggone it, we talk about it and we talk about it and we talk about it and let's do it this time. And so, if you guys are looking at me to say a number, I'm going to throw one out there. I'm going to say, "Let's look at 8 million. Let's, let's make a splash. Let's tell our staff how much we appreciate. Let's look at 8 million. What does 8 million do to our budget? What is the tolerance level of this board? Is that too high? Then throw out a number. But let's, let's stop wasting our time and effort right now crunching numbers after crunching numbers on these pay tables and let's determine what our level of comfort is to say, "We can tackle in our budget and we can defend the City Council." And then go back and direct our staff to take that and run it through and whether it's this percent or that percent. I hear exactly what you're saying, Dr. Edwards, and I completely agree with you. I would love to see higher percentages at our lower pay tables. And I understand what Dr. Gupta's saying when he's saying, "After you get over-the-top, 1, 1 and 1/2%. Eventually, others are making 2%, 2%, 2%, and you're making 1 and 1/2. Eventually, we get back to that compression issue." So, it might be as simple as you say, just to extend the pay tables till you have 50 years of service with LCS. That might be the easy thing to do to help address Dr. Gupta's concern. But let's, let's do something real here. That's, that's all I'm saying. And if we need a number, I'll throw out 8 million. We talked about it last, at the last board meeting. I said, "That'd be a 10%. That'd be 10%. We're looking at the state offering 5% this year and 5% next year. That's 10% across the board." And I believe Dr. Nillis correctly said, "If we have approximately 84 million, we're looking at 8 point, I mean, yeah, 84 million in their salary currently, which is budgeted, we're looking at about 800, $8,400,000." So, I'll throw that number out there. Let's talk about that number.
All right. Let's, let's talk about that. Because we can't be here all night, but we got to give the superintendent some direction, at least on this phase of our draft budgeting process.
I guess I want to...
Charles?
Thank you. Mr. Harvey, I guess you're saying there, there is this three and a half million dollars of, I'm gonna call it benefit excess money. Is that a, a recurring, is that recurring every year that we have this three and a half? Okay.
It, it varies. It, sometimes, sometimes we could, in theory, spend less than we take in. I think we've had a year or two that that, that's happened. But there has been, over the past couple of years, at least since I've been sitting on the board, we've, we've been in a negative number. And we've had to, um, we've had to use...
Oh, for health insurance?
For health insurance, yes, ma'am.
If we, if we, uh, burn through that mo, utilize that money for, uh, as you're suggesting, I guess we gotta find that money...
That money sits across the street. We have, we have a reserve, a healthcare reserve.
It's two point something, though.
Two point...
Okay, does it get funded every year that we have that two million dollar reserve every year?
No, that's, that's what I'm saying. That we, and we're not allowed to contribute to it. We're not allowed, in those years when we have savings, we're not allowed to contribute to it.
They have voted not to...
They voted not to allow us to contribute to it because it just, I might be assuming this, but it, because it just kinda sits there, that we don't use it. And they, and therefore, it forces us to utilize this money that we have in unpaid positions.
So just point of clarification, just so I understand. So let's say we have unfilled positions on that side of the table, all right? And pretend you aren't there. We take that money to beef up this side of the table. But we still need to fill those four seats. But now, there's no, we didn't budget for those four seats because we took, once you take the money, the way we have it in the system, is we remove the FTE for Susan, and we put it over here on Mike, we remove the FTE for Bob and put it over here. So the following year where I still need six math teachers, and we've taken three offline, we still need six math teachers, so...
I, I get that.
Okay.
Trust me, I totally understand that. But we've always needed six math teachers, and we've never gotten six math teachers. So we take the other ten math teachers that we have, and we overload them, and we stress them out as we keep hearing about, because they're having to do double duty for the math teacher that we've never gotten, but we've budgeted for. I would rather tell that one teacher, I appreciate and admire what you're doing and taking on that extra load. And I want to recognize that, and your salary needs to reflect that. That's all I'm saying. If we get to the point, those others, those six other math teachers, we need them, then we need to revisit the budget once again.
I, I think we, and I, I hear you, and...
I think we're adamantly in agreement.
Yes, we are. I, and I do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, and I think the teachers are probably loving, yes, but then they're probably thinking, no, I don't know that I could sustain teaching every day without a prep period, even though right now, we are paying them to do it. But what it's saying is, we're never gonna get Susan, and you're always gonna teach straight through the day, and we're gonna pay you more, but you're always gonna teach straight through the day. And I, I, I would be hesitant to make that kind of decision for my teachers without talking to them, saying, how many of you want to every day? At a, if you got compensated for it, to do this? And, and the reason why I say that, um, is at the beginning of the year, we changed, we added, and by January, I had some teachers who said, I don't care what you pay me, I can't do this. Like, I can't do the work because I need the time, even though we don't have the six math teachers. So I, I wanna be mindful that we don't set ourselves up and say, we're gonna make do with what we have. We're gonna, we're gonna definitely pay people much higher wages, but we're just gonna get, you know, not worry about the six math teachers so that we...
Okay, I, I'll concede, let that money stay there. It can roll into the fund balance, and let's talk eight million dollars.
Oh, I think I really didn't have my hand up, but...
Oh, you didn't?
But I'll say this, I know beginning of this year, we had to decide whether or not we wanted to add any, have the employees pay any of the health insurance. And the majority said no, because I know that generally, we have some funds left over, and we can supplement that to pay any deficits there are. So now we have that, and then we're looking at adding more, uh, or, because we can't be, we can't get into the negatives as a board. That's the quickest way to get us all off. That's one thing that we are definitely, um, here to make sure that our budget is always secured and that we don't get, get into any negatives.
Yeah, we have to, the budget has to be sustainable. And we are getting ready to enter some uncertain terrain over the next few years as to a lot of variables. And so we just have to consider all of these things. So I hear, uh, eight million, I heard stay the same. Dr. Nillis, you have any input?
I think, um, where we're at right now, this is a really good starting point. Uh, I think the, this base, this, I consider this a baseline proposal. We can, I think, look at adding on, let's say, for example, a percent to everybody to kind of, you know, catch up. And, um, you know, we are competing with surrounding, uh, school divisions. Uh, we are also looking at probably another five percent raise or SLQ funded, um, for the following year. So this is not just a one-time, you know, and this is a, this is a, this is a big, big increase, you know, because it does require a local match.
Dr. Carter?
And also, when people hear that we have so much cares funds, they think it's one pot. So to go over across the street and say, we need so much, and the first thing you're gonna hear, well, you have the cares funds, and how much do you have? And knowing that it's two different things, and a lot of the cares funds is earmarked, or you can only use for certain things. But a lot of times, when other departments are in need, um, you, you don't hear that. You just hear it as, you all have them so much money, why are you coming over here? Why are you even asking?
All right, so I, I, I think I've heard Dr. Nillis say, if we stick with what we have, then maybe a percent increase?
Well, I, I, th- this is raising, uh, uh, working with, you know, the, the lower paid staff, which we've all, has been a priority for us. And it supports the five percent increase for the division overall. And, you know, I think we can look at probably trying to raise that somewhat more to, you know, a percent is, you know, and that's in light of, one, we do wanna, uh, improve our competitive situation with respect to surrounding divisions in terms of pay. But we're also, in the following year, we're looking at probably another five percent raise. And that's not, that's not an easy lift, um, given that we have no control over our budget, essentially. So, um, and I would hate to be aggressive one year and then put the following board in a, in a bind.
All right, um, uh, Mr. Trosden, Mr. Harvey?
And, uh, turning to Dr. Gupta's point, the over the top percentage, in essence, uh, what he's proposing, I, and I agree, the one point five percent is a little, it's almost a, uh, a penalized, penalization, penalty, rather, for, um, being long-term. Is there any reason we can't take that last level and just say, that's the, every year after that, that's what you get? If it's three percent or two point six, or whatever it is?
They're, they're all, if you look at the charts...
Right.
They're, they're all above. I think what happens is as you go from P to Q to R, you end up in over the top. Like, at some point, everybody ends up in over the top. And what I want the board to know is that over the top didn't get anything, right?
Right.
So, previous, I mean, in our past history...
Okay.
They didn't get anything, so...
Wow.
This is an attempt to say, okay, let's not forget our, I mean, once you ha- hit that level, um, you kinda max out. And we, we're trying not to, you know, we're trying to be mindful that, you know, they're, they're up there, but still, let's try to give them something.
I, I think also, isn't this kind of a norm for school divisions? That kinda, basically, after thirty years, you're, you kinda top out anyway?
Yeah, I think every pay table we...
No, that's not, anyway, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you.
Um, okay, so base-wise, we're talking four point two. That's what you guys are, are saying, safe, it's safe. So I'm gonna make a motion that this board consider appropriating six million dollars towards salary, and we can work it in here, but I wanna vote up or down on it. If I don't get a second, that's fine, that speaks loud for the, for the board, but I'm making the motion that we look at six million dollars in lieu of four point two.
Is there a second to...
I'll second that.
Then a second to Mr. Harvey's motion, uh, that you say six million dollars?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Over the top. Any questions or discussion on the motion, Mr. Trosden?
So, I just wanna understand, so, Mr. Harvey, what you're saying is we'd use that six million dollars and kind of back, back-end, back-end the approach? Now, would, is your recommendation that we, um, weight the back-ending approach to the, the lower level pay? Okay.
But I do wanna be, I wanna be...
I'm just trying to get some direction.
I wanna be succinct in what, what I think needs to take place. I do think that percentage-wise, the lower end of the pay hot, need higher percentages. I don't believe in saying, we got someone, let's do, you know, a five percent raise, and they end up with, as, as Dr. Gupta has said, you know, two thousand dollars a year, and someone else ends up with, with, that who's on the higher end of the pay scale, ends up with an extra ten million, uh, ten thousand dollars a year. So I do think the percentage-wise could be weighted toward the lower end of the scale. I don't think that this should be targeted at our highest, highest level administration, but I do believe that we should, uh, be able to take that money, allow our staff to go back and work the tables to that.
Any further discussion on the motion, Mr. Trosden?
And again, I, I just, I agree, I like the idea. I just wanna give Dr. Edwards and her staff some direction, because at this point, it's almost, and I like the idea, here's two million dollars, figure it out, but then now we're saying, okay, but I don't want the, you know, just, I don't want the, uh, people making over eighty thousand dollars to partake, partake in that extra two million dollars. I'm just trying to get an idea to flush it out for Dr. Edwards.
And, and I could be speaking as an individual board member, but I feel like, um, Dr. Edwards, with all respect, we've negotiated her salary.
I'm not in this.
I know, I know, I'm just saying. So, so as we look at our, we, our entire, um, human resources department, we have readjusted their salary last year. I don't think that we need to target all of those, um, individuals as we need to target those who have not had a readjustment to their salaries.
Uh, uh, Mr. Harvey, you've given a lot of specificity to the motion, but we, we hear what you're saying, and, and, and point well taken. Um, Dr. Gupta?
You know, other piece of the puzzle, which I have not received an answer, is we, last year approved about three-plus million dollars of unfunded, uh, positions, funded through the cares money, which is not carried over after two, three years. So three years down the road, it's going to come back and bite us, how do we fund that thing? So, you know, because those were unfunded mandates, I mean, they were funded, but for short term. So, uh, those positions are filled, unfilled, I don't know what the status is, but that's an obligation we'll have, uh, two, three years out, when the, uh, cares money dries up. So, uh, we gotta keep that in picture, and having said that, number two, if we use, I mean, I, I, I support this proposal, but the thing is, it should fund the hourly wages. We need to bring them out so that we can compete. I personally don't want any more driver issues, at all. You know, it's, every year, I hear the same thing, we have driver shortages, counties stealing our drivers. They're, they're, you know, they're, they're going to this place, that place. So we should be the place for everybody to drive a bus, come to Lynchburg Esports. We should be the place for the custodians to work, but this is the place you want to be.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta, Dr. Carter.
So what about the, the higher, the, the principals? Would they be in line? We increased, wasn't...
Middle school, we adjusted middle school.
We adjusted middle school. But didn't we look at every position when we did increases last year? Because this is not...
We adjusted nurses, we adjusted technicians, we adjusted middle school principals, we adjusted, um, some folks in the finance department. I'm trying to think, um, we adjusted bus drivers, bus assistants, instructional assistants, PCA's, TEAs. Um, so there were a lot of positions that were, as a group, individually adjusted. And part of it, and I don't know if you guys remember the conversation way back early on when we were very technology and remote, it was our technicians that we were concerned about, um, because they could get higher wages in private industry. So we made an adjustment there. And, and then we hit a nursing, and we still, these issues are still here. I'm not saying that we fixed them. So we made some adjustments, and you'll see the, the nurses are on the, they were on a classified scale. The nurses are now on a teacher's scale. The RNs, I should say, there's RNs and LPNs. Um, and then we made some other adjustments as we've been trying our best to work through what we have. So I don't want anyone to think that, you know, we, we have not been addressing that, um, going forward. And, and to the point of the motion, and I know we haven't voted on it, but I would ask that, and I, that's one of the reasons why I purposely did the pay tables the way that I, that we did, because should you say to me, we want two million dollars, and Dr. Edwards include that in everybody in sections one through four, but not five, six, and seven, otherwise, we're gonna go back and not hit the mark that you want. And thereby section, so section six is administrative staff. And I will say, uh, when we say administrative, people think principals, assistant principals, yes, they are also in there, but so are your speech language pathologists, your BCBAs as well. There are other positions, OTPT and speech. Um, there are all other positions that may be in that. And that's why we listed them for you, so that you would know where you are. So where I hear you're saying there are certain groups that we don't want it to apply to, I'm gonna need you to tell me where that line is so that we don't, we have a week between the now and the next board meeting. So the clarity would help us focus.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. And before we go to anyone else, then would the maker of the motion like to weigh in on these specifics? I guess that's where you were trying to go. Do you have suggestions?
I mean, I can be as specific with the motion as you would like for me to be. I just feel like that in doing so, I can, um, end up limiting some of the things that I would feel more appropriate for, uh, Dr. Edwards and her team to actually be looking at. But if you want some specificity, again, I said, HR department, we had a, 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 across the board reconciliation with, with that group last, I believe, last year, with their previous, um, HR director, okay? I think we need to look at our senior leadership administration as, as not necessarily being a part of this because we have negotiated those salaries specifically in targeting those to be appropriate for, um, against what other areas are.
You're not, I mean, when we did our comparisons, some of our senior positions are, are lower wage compared to other divisions.
Well, then, then that, that needs to be looked at.
So, Mr. Harvey, would it be helpful? I'm just asking, I'm, you, you stay right with you. Would it be helpful, Dr. Edwards? I think, Mr. Harvey, was somewhat suggesting that we could leave that up to you and your staff?
No, no, you don't wanna do that, no.
We did, but we don't, so we...
No, that's not fair.
All right, that's fine, I'll take that off the table. But in order to get you what you want, so people have got to do some pretty fast thinking on their feet here, otherwise, we're gonna be here all night. Dr. Carter?
If I was watching the school board, and I know that some of our, I want to raise the scales of, um, the salaries of individuals that are below a certain amount, um, to more competitive amount. But at the same time, we have some top-level seniors and directors that are doing two and three jobs. They're doing just incredible amounts of work and are tired and frustrated and don't have time to take sick leave or, or annual leave or anything. And we have to compensate them too, to also have, make them competitive, or we will see them leave also. So I think, um, and, and like I said, we're, we need to go ahead with this budget. We need to move along with this budget because we are already, we're looking at the month of February next month.
Next week.
Next week, yes, next month, next week. And we do not, we need to, we gave them direction, we gave Dr. Edwards direction a month or so ago. So we, whatever we need to do, we need to stick with it. So let's do a vote and move along.
And, and Dr. Carter, well said.
Please.
Again, I'm trying to honor the superintendent. If we're voting, a, a blanket six million dollars added on is not telling her where the money would and would not go. Dr. Brennan?
I just wanna make a comment that, that I, I really...
I just want to make a comment, that I, I really appreciate Dr. Mr. Harvey's enthusiasm, and I think we all agree that we want the most of the staff, and we'd love to give them raises as high as we can afford or we can't afford. But, you know, I, I have concerns about the current proposal, and I will not vote for it, because I think that this process is complicated, I think that's what we've learned over the years, and we've learned tonight, as we look through with the work that's gone through this. And last time I heard, maybe we should have $8 million, this time we're saying $6 million, maybe we should take the money we have set aside for open spots that we want to fill, we should take that money? I, I don't think that's being responsible and appropriate as we should be doing as a board. I think what the responsible thing is, is to take the information in detail that we have, and to, to work on that, but not just to say, "I think this is a good idea, and I'm going to take some numbers, we're going to put those out there." I don't think that's fair, and that's appropriate for our responsibility as a board to be responsive to general ideas that are thrown out. I think we need the details, we've got the details, and I think we should proceed with those.
Mr. Harvey, then Dr. Nellis?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, Dr. Brennan, and, and I would agree to a certain degree. And, and what I say by that is, I have asked for some time about looking at the budget from a line item perspective, and us doing the hard labor to find the money to make this happen. So now it's a, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? So we can either look at the budget, and let's start going line by line through the budget, and let's find the money that we can spend, or let's say, we want to spend this amount of money, and then go find the, find it in the line items. So I don't think it's being irresponsible, I feel like that this, this process has been set in motion the way it has been. I spoke my mind in the, in the finance committee meeting as well, and, and this is the table that the staff has spent all the time to develop. And I believe I said during the finance committee, I think this should come to the board first, let's get a number, see what everybody's paying threshold is, and then send our staff back to work on it, versus continuing to wear them out and spin the wheels. So I think you've got to have one or the other. You can't have, to have the chicken, we've got to have the egg, to have the egg, we've got to have the chicken. So I'm saying, let's look at $6 million, let's put it out there, let's have a vote on it, up or down, that it's part of our budget, and then send back staff to ask them to, to work the tables out accordingly. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
I'm not going to support the motion, I don't find it specific enough, and it's, there's no goal here, I mean, other than to figure out how to spend $6 million. We've got a good baseline, this is a starting point, we need to see what other, what the other programs and needs are, and Brennan, and then we can go from there, so.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. Uh, Mr. Dr. Gupta, then hopefully we can move to a vote.
Can we call a vote?
Yeah, just, just a point of clarification, that if this motion is, is not approved, we're basically telling the superintendent to go ahead with his budget.
There could be another motion made by someone else if they wanted to, or we would stick with what we have, and maybe the 1%. All right, we've asked for the, called for the vote, and so if you would, uh, vote, I'm going to explain, yes, ma'am, I'm going to explain it right now, yes, ma'am. We are voting now on Mr. Harvey's motion, seconded by Dr. Senha, to add $6 million, we're not giving any directions to the $6 million at this time, that would help us in the staffing or personnel with these eight or nine pay tables. If you vote for it, then the motion will pass, and that will give some direction to the superintendent. If you vote no, then the motion would fail. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up, Mama Tros?
No.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Brennan?
No.
Scoop up, Mama Miss Morrison?
No.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Carter?
No.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Cohen?
No.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Nellis?
No.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Senha?
No.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Gupta?
No.
Scoop up, Mama Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
All right, that motion fails, do we want to leave it like it is and do the 1%?
No, no.
Yes.
Just leave it like it is. Mr. Tros?
May I just, I want to ask, and I get, I, I agree, I want to, we need to take care of our employees, your points are well taken. If we were to, and the reason I voted that way, I just think we need some more direction for Dr. Edwards.
I would agree.
Yeah.
But, so just, if hypothetically, right now we're at 4.5, additional, is that true?
4.2.
4.2, and if we went to, call it 50% more, 6.0, just for easy math, 6.4, whatever 50% more would be, 6.3 would be, and we applied that 50% increase across the board, is that an easy exercise?
I'm sorry, I can say that one more time?
So, Mr. Harvey is saying, let's do $6 million and, and figure out a way to do it. If we went to a 50% increase over, you know, take another 50% money of the 4.2, which would be in our 2.1 million, just, and I'm just using that for an easy percentage-wise, and we took that extra money and imposed a 50% increase on what you've given us here, would that work? Is that, is that easy, an easy exercise, or is it not, is that too simplistic?
So when you say 50% increase on, so if I'm getting a 7%, I'm going to a 14%, is that what you...
Well, it'd be 7%, that'd be 100% increase, so 7...
So, or, that's why I'm asking, I'm asking if, if you're thinking double or half or what, or is it a 10, 10 and a half percent?
Well, what I'm trying to do is give you direction, if we were to say, let's add to, you know, here's a $6.3 million of, of extra money, is it as simple as imposing that, and maybe you have, is that, just see what I'm trying to propose?
Yeah, but, I mean, you could just do a, it's like adding a constant. But we, I think we all, there's a, there's also an approach that says we still need to bring up the bottom, more so than we have to bring up the top. And when you do a percentage on a big number, it's a lot bigger increase than on a smaller number, so where we really have to focus is bringing up the bottom. Now, of course, that causes the problem of compression, so you do have to raise everybody up. But you want just systematically add that 50% evenly across everybody. So that's where it starts to get really complicated, because now you have to choose.
I understand.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask tonight, at a certain point you get to what you call the law of diminishing return. I think we've given direction, Dr. Edwards, to you, based on what has been presented, and of course, there are further meetings around all of this, and so unless there's objection, let us move on to section.
Yeah, and the direction is what?
Okay, well, we, well, we can have a vote on...
I'm just asking what we're, direction we're giving.
It says action.
So, my understanding would be that the proposal is to accept the revised pay, pay scales, basically, as presented here, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, and this, 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 excuse me, everyone, but this item here, it says discussion. However, if we want to go on record for action to affirm what you presented to us tonight, I have no problem with that. Is there a motion?
I think we need to.
Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the draft salary proposals as is and continue along with that.
Which is the specifics of what was presented with these nine pay tables. All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Senha, motion was made by Dr. Carter, that we will embrace the nine pay table dynamic that was given to us tonight. Any further questions or discussion? Uh, Mr. Harvey?
Oh, you.
I just want to give kudos to you for collapsing, and, and I don't know how, how it came to be so many different pay tables, it really didn't differ that much when you looked at them closely, into a more manageable set, so then in the future, we're just looking at, what was it, nine tables instead of 30, or however many? So that's a really big step in the right direction, and I know that was a lot of work just to do that analysis and look at it, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. Mr. Harvey, did you?
Yes, I, I just want to be clear that I'm going to be voting no to this motion, and it's not that I am against supporting our staff getting a raise, I just think this is too little, too late. When we, as a board, go around this horn and talk about how much we appreciate our staff, we're basically committing to them to say, "We're going to take the money that the state's going to give us, and we're going to pass that along, and we're not ponying up anything to it." So I will be voting against this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Again, remember, this is not the final budget tonight. If there's no other further questions or discussion, Madam Clerk, could you call the...
I just have a comment before we, it's, I absolutely disagree with Mr. Harvey's comments. Let's vote.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Yes, you're in support of Dr. Carter's motion, no, you're not.
Scoop up, Mama Tros?
Yes.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, Mama Miss Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Gupta?
No.
Scoop up, Mama Mr. Harvey?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, board, we will continue. Dr. Gupta?
I just want to make sure, my no is only because I know you proposed $15 an hour, at that time, too, I said, "How much will it cost us?" You know, picking a random number doesn't help us in the budgeting process. You've got to figure out what we are doing, so how much ask will be there to the city? So that's why I didn't support at that time. But to me, right now, we are still short of the goal we need to have to be comparative in the market space. So that's why, that doesn't put your work, hard work down, that was not the objective.
All points so noted. To the board, in section E, what you have is a school desegregation resolution, the intent of this is not for action tonight, but to provide it for information for you to read over, and, and this will be brought at February, the first meeting, for us to consider, so please read the resolution. I think when you read it, you will see value in what it is reporting, but if it's okay with the board, this was just presented to you tonight for reading, and it'll come back to us at the February meeting. Dr. Senha?
Can you clarify why? I mean, I read it, but where's this coming from? Yeah, what's driving this?
Wait a minute, I want to make sure I've answered the specific question, when you say what's driving it, what do you mean?
Well, I'm seeing it, but why, I mean, why now, why this? I mean, I'm not, I'm not...
Oh, I got you, well...
Like, where it just...
The, the, Saturday, January the 29th, is the 60th anniversary, this coming Saturday, is the 60th anniversary of when our schools were desegregated here in the city of Lynchburg. And it talks about the figures that were involved in that, and just to acknowledge that, of those forgotten heroes, and to celebrate our proud history that makes the city of Lynchburg the city that it has become.
Thank you, I, I just wanted to...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to not answer the question correctly.
So, should we do it today, before?
No, we didn't, the purpose, we didn't want to, I didn't want to do it tonight. I want you to have a chance to look at it and ponder it. All right? Thank you all very much, I appreciate it. All right, and that will put us to the last part of the agenda, which is our informational items, the next school board meeting will be February the 1st. We, it's, in order, February the 8th, legislative advocacy at 3:30. The next work session will be February the 15th, finance will be February the 22nd, and this meeting stands adjourned. I do want to indicate to the board that the council tonight voted to disband the task force. To disband the task force.